Good evening. Welcome to the City Council Norman Utilities Authority, Norman Municipal Authority, and Norman Tax Increment Finance Authority meeting of July 10, 2018. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Councilmember Clark?
Present.
Councilmember Hickman?
Here.
Councilmember Wilson?
Oh, I'm here.
It's on our toes.
Surprise.
No, I'm here. I'm eating cake.
Councilmember Beerman?
Here.
Councilmember Castleberry?
Here.
Councilmember Holman?
Here.
Councilmember Scott?
Here.
Councilmember Carter?
Here.
Mayor Miller?
Here.
Please join me for the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before I read the consent docket, I want to do something a little unusual. I would like us to pay our respect to an amazing special woman, Mary Hatley, who passed away recently. Many of us attended her funeral yesterday. She worked for the city of Norman for 42 years. She was the city clerk for 31 years. She served with 10 mayors, nine city managers, and 84 council members. And she was the mother to them all. And she was so special that I feel like in the office every day, I have a little bit of Mary in Brenda and in Ellen and in Cindy. So. A moment. A moment of silence for Mary. Thank you very much. Item number three is approval of the City Council's study session minutes of May 29, 2018, City Council's study session minutes of June 5, 2018, City Council Norman Utilities Authority, Norman Municipal Authority, and Norman Tax Increment Finance Authority minutes of June 26, 2018, and City Council meeting minutes of July 3, 2018. I need a motion to approve the minutes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion on the floors to approve the minutes. By show of hands, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed, same sign. That was unanimous. Item four is a proclamation proclaiming the month of July 2018 as Water's Worth It Month in the city of Norman. I'll entertain a motion to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation.
Motion to acknowledge.
Second.
All those in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed, same sign. That was unanimous. A proclamation of the mayor of the city of Norman, Oklahoma proclaiming the month of July 2018 as Water's Worth It Month in the city of Norman. Whereas Water's Worth It Month is being promoted by the Environmental Control Advisory Board to help increase community awareness of Norman's most precious natural resource, and whereas Water's Worth It is a campaign by the Water Environment Federation to help answer questions about how our actions, our attitudes, and the things we most value are closely connected with water. And whereas Water's Worth It Month is one of the many ways to help promote the protection of Norman's water by increasing educational efforts, by including booths at various functions and locations, information in newspapers, and literature showing citizens how to conserve and protect water. And whereas Water's Worth It, Worth Our Respect, communities are built on water, and whereas Water's Worth Our Effort, clean water is everyone's responsibility, and whereas Water's Worth Our Health, water is life, and whereas Water's Worth Our Future, dealing with an aging infrastructure, and whereas Water's Worth Our Passion, as we find solution for the 21st century, and whereas the protection and the conservation of Norman's water improves the quality of life by having a cleaner and more abundant supply of water now and in the future, and reduces the cost of water and wastewater treatment. Now therefore, I, mayor of the city of Norman, do hereby proclaim the month of July 2018 as Water's Worth It Month and call upon all citizens and civic organizations to become knowledgeable and acquaint themselves with the problems involved in maintaining safe water. And at this time, I'd like Amanda Nerrin to come forward and receive the proclamation. Amanda is the chair of our Environmental Control Advisory Board and many other positions. Thank you. Do you want to say a few words?
I just want to thank council. This is our seventh year. We were the first in the nation to have this proclamation. I say it every year, but I think that's something we should be proud of. We continue to do it. A lot of times in July, we're, a lot of, we have water on our mind because we're low on it. Not so much this July, but you know, we're in pretty good shape with the lake right now, but the conversation's still important to have, still to have in our thoughts every day with our things we do at home and things we do at work. So I'm proud of this city for everything that we've done regarding water. We have a lot more work to do. We're working on several things right now. But I thank you for always supporting us. I thank the Environmental Control Advisory Board. We're still doing a lot of water education. I don't think we'll ever get to the point where we don't need that anymore. So I appreciate your continued support, and we will still continue to work. So, thank you so much.
Item number five is the consent docket. This item is placed on the agenda so that the City Council, by unanimous consent, can designate those routine agenda items that they wish to be approved or acknowledged by one motion. I need a motion to place items six through 29 on the consent docket.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed, same sign. That was unanimous. An ordinance upon first reading amending Chapter 22 to allow, the zoning ordinance to allow the sale of alcoholic beverages in compliance with state law in theaters, to change liquor store or package store liquor store to retail spirit store, to delete short-order food, short-order food restaurant, to amend the percentage of sales required to qualify as restaurant, and deleting the definition of restaurant short-order food. Item seven is an ordinance upon first reading closing a portion of the right-of-way south of Rock Creek Road and west of Pendleton Drive in the southwest quarter of Section 14 Township 9, North Range 3, west of the Indian Meridian, Norman, Cleveland County, Oklahoma. Item number eight is an ordinance upon first reading rezoning property located at the southwest corner of West Rock Creek Road and Pendleton Drive from A2 Rural Agriculture District to C2 General Commercial District. Item nine, an ordinance upon first reading amending Chapter 13 of the city code to establish regulations for the operation of non-motorized transportation for hire pedicabs. Item 10 is the submission of Norman Regional Health System 2019 budget. Item 11 is submission of the annual report of the Norman 2025 Land Use and Transportation Plan. Item 12 is payment of FYE 2019 dues assessment in the amount of $65,000 to the Oklahoma Municipal League for the period of July 1, 2018 through June 30, 2019. Item 13 is a bid for the purchase of Quicklime for the water treatment plant. Item 14 is the acceptance of a permanent easement donated by the University of Oklahoma to serve the Highway 9 Multimodal Path Project Phase 1 from 24th Avenue Southeast to 36th Avenue Southeast. Item 15 is the acceptance, acceptance of a permanent public utility easement donated by Sooner Fashion Mall LLC for Longhorn Steakhouse located at 201 North Interstate Drive. Item 16 is the acceptance of a permanent public utility easement donated by Sooner Fashion Mall LLC for Longhorn Steakhouse located at 201 North Interstate Drive. Item 17 is the acceptance of a permanent sidewalk easement donated by 24th Avenue Apartments for University North Park Section 14 Lot 1, Block 1, a planned unit development. Item 18 is the donation in the amount of $600 from North Shore's Animal League America to be used at the Norman Animal Welfare Center in budget appropriation. Item 19 is special claims submitted by Billy Thomas in the amount of $2,202 for damage to his vehicle as a result of an accident with the Public Works Department vehicle at the intersection of North Porter Avenue and East Robinson Street. Item 20 is the acceptance of certified local government's grant funding in the amount of $11,250 to be used for the development and support of local historic programs, approval of a contract with the Oklahoma Historical Society State Historic Preservation Office, and budget appropriation from the special grant fund balance. Item 21 is acceptance of a grant in the amount of $13,064 to the city of Norman and Cleveland County from the United States Department of Justice Bureau of Justice Assistance through the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistant Grant Program with Norman's portion of $11,758 to be used by the Police Department for forensic training and associated travel, approval of a contract, and a budget appropriation from grant revenue account. Item 22 is a change order with Foley Company increasing the contract amount by $207,727.96 for a revised contract amount of $30,197,892.96 and adding 87 calendar days to the contract for the water treatment plant Phase 2 improvements. Item 23 is a change order with Precision Concrete Cutting of Oklahoma, increasing the contract amount by $7,853.13 for a revised contract amount of $141,159.13 for the CDBG Core Area Sidewalk Project Phase 2 and final acceptance of the project. Item 24 is final acceptance and final payment of a contract with Precision Contract Cutting of Oklahoma for the CDBG Colonial Estates Horizontal Saw Cutting Project. Item 25 is a contract with the Oklahoma Water Resources Board and the U.S. Geological Survey in the amount of $5,900 to provide for Canadian River water quality and water quantity monitoring for the fiscal year of 2019. Item 26 is a contract with the United States Department of Agriculture, Animal and Plant Health Inspection Services, Wildlife Services, in the amount of $12,500 for the annual financial work plan for the control of aquatic rodents effective July 1, 2018 through June 30, 2019. Item 27 is a contract with Capital Cleaning to provide custodial services for the Norman Public Library East. Item 28 is a resolution acknowledging the receipt of the 2019 Assessment Role and Assessment plat for the University North Park Business Improvement District, instructing the city clerk to give notice of a hearing on the proposed assessment clause. Item 29 is an ordinance amending the planned unit development established by Ordinance 00203-2 and amended by Ordinance 00607-13 to allow development of up to 50 net acres north of Rock Creek Road for commercial uses included approximately 150,000 square feet of entertainment restaurant uses for the property generally located north of Robinson Street, south of Tecumseh Road, east of I-35, and west of the Westheimer Airport. The applicant has requested the item be postponed until August 14, 2018. I need a motion to approve or reject the consent docket.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Are there any comments from council regarding any item on the consent docket? Councilmember Castleberry?
I did have a quick question on item 26. Sean, on the aquatic rodent program, did we use any of that money last year? I know we budgeted some money back there in case we do, but do you remember?
I'm sorry, councilor, the question?
On, did we use any of the funds last, in last year?
All of the funds. Yeah, we have, I can't think of a year that we didn't use all the funds. In fact, we normally have more requests than we have funding to provide.
That's going to be my follow-up question. I know it used to be 25,000. We've cut it in half. Is that adequate?
It's working. You know, we're always, we're able to serve the folks we need to. A lot of times, it rolls into the next year before we can help them. But I think this last year, we had 44 calls for service, and we were able to service all of those one way or another.
Okay, I know I've had some calls.
You bet. It's working pretty well. Haven't had a lot of folks in neighborhoods that have been unhappy with our service or even having to wait a month or two at the end of the year.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Clark?
I just wanted to speak about item number 12, which is our membership fees with Oklahoma Municipal League, and excited that we are continuing our relationship with OML. Their new executive director, Mike Fina, has been amazing. They have been very, very helpful in some efforts that we've been passionate about here in Norman. They hike down here once a month to meet with us and answer any questions that we have, and I think that's been a very beneficial relationship, and I am excited to continue that. I'm also excited to see us continue work on, and I know we talk about it often, the multimodal path project on Highway 9. I know that the NCED is really excited to have that almost completed, and it'd be a great site for if we get our docking stations with the city of Norman, one out there as we continue to build the path so that keeps East Norman hooked into those new paths as well. So those are my comments on this.
Other comments? The motion on the floor is to approve the consent docket. Councilmembers, you may cast your vote. All votes have been cast, and the motion to approve the consent docket passes unanimously. Did you announce? Okay. Item 30 is a resolution appropriating $35,000 from accumulated University North Park Tax Increment Financing District revenues to fund an economic impact analysis to be performed by HBS Convention Sports and Entertainment Facilities Consulting, and $25,000 from accumulated UNP District revenues to compensate HBS for reviewing various reports and studies regarding an entertainment district proposal at the UNP project for a total of $60,000. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the resolution.
Motion to adopt. Second.
I think you're gonna... Yes or no?
Hi, Mayor. Thank you, councilmembers, and welcome to Councilwoman Scott and Councilman Carter to your new positions. I'm Emily Palmeroy with the Center for Economic Development Law. I serve as Development Counsel to the city of Norman, and as you know, I'm helping you take a look at the proposed University North Park project. This is brought to you on the heels of the comments last time we were together on this topic about HBS expanding the scope of their analysis to perform a demand analysis, an economic impact analysis, and a fiscal impact analysis. We sought out a proposal by HBS to do those things, and that's what is before you tonight. It will endeavor to take a look at net new impacts of the proposed project. That's before you from the RTCL Master Plan and the University of Oklahoma Foundation's proposed entertainment district. You have the proposal in front of you in your packet. I'm happy to try to address any additional questions, talk about timeline or scope or any other thoughts that you might have.
Would you remind us of the timeline?
Yes. HBS has indicated that they can have a document back to City Council on July 24. That's to you, so not necessarily on the agenda for that day because we would want to be sure and give you appropriate time to review it. So I think at some, some council date after that would be a good time to have Mr. Hazensky come, present his report, answer any questions or comments that you...
And part of this contract includes him coming back and presenting to the council?
That is a...
I thought I read that.
Good question.
I think I read that in there.
I think it is included in the scope, Mayor.
Councilmember Holman?
Emily, could, could part of it include some sort of basic look at those same factors, the economic impact of the area if it just develops kind of similarly to the south half? Kind of looking for what, I'd like to know more information about what happens with this area if it develops. It's going to develop anyway, no matter what we do. So these are still questions I want to know the answers to about what is the impact of this area regardless of what we do on the rest of the city? I don't know if that could be part of the scope, maybe a minor piece or just an overview. I don't know.
So, one... Try, go ahead. That's a good question. One thing, based on a similar inquiry from Councilman Hickman, that we followed up with Tom Hazensky to discuss was exactly that, which is the analysis of if the project happens versus if the project doesn't happen. And, and by that, I don't mean, you know, no developments. Like you said, the property will develop on some level. And that is not included in this written scope, but at Mr. Hickman's request, we have inquired of Mr. Hazensky what that would look like, and he's indicated that he's willing to take a look at the parameters of that analysis, of course, at additional cost. He scoped that at an estimate of $5,000. So that's something that could be added should council decide to do so.
Thank you.
Councilmember Beerman?
Hi, Emily.
Hi.
I have a couple questions. Hopefully, you can answer them. I was kind of had my fingers crossed that Mr. Hazensky, Havinsky, Hazensky?
Hazensky.
Hazensky would be here. Since he's not, maybe you can't answer these questions, but I'm going to pose them to you anyway. Do you know what HBS's expertise is in looking at city budget impacts? Can you speak to that at all?
Well, I can't specifically. I've read a lot about the work that they do, and I know that this is very common in the work that they do. Mr. Hazensky, last time he was in front of you, did speak generally to work that he's done for cities all over the country. I'm not able to pull those statistics on the spot here, but this is the work of HBS and something that's very familiar and common for their, for their business.
Okay. And how in this analysis will he address not the direct cannibalization of businesses moving from outside the TIF area to inside the TIF area, but the shifting of resident spending? You know, I know that we're looking at net new, but are we also going to be looking at what, if any, impact this new area will have on the shift in spending? Because we all know everyone only has a limited number of dollars to spend, and where they spend it will have an impact on how much revenue the city sees from that.
Right. I have spoken some with Mr. Hazensky and his team at HBS about that issue. He's been asking questions very relevant to that point, which is a, is a good sign. They will be analyzing both from the aspect of new households, so new residents to Norman, and, you know, even though that might mean that someone moves from another part of Norman to this area, how many true new residents will there be to the entire city of Norman? And coupled with that, the spending analysis. So knowing how many new residents there are, and then looking at that with their, with spending habits, you know, based on the market, based on the market of Norman.
So we're only going to be looking at the spending habits of the new residents to Norman? We're not going to be doing any analysis of how this will shift the spending habits of current residents of Norman?
That's not what I meant to say. He will not just be looking at the habits of new residents, but that will be a component of, of his analysis. What he told us last time he was with us was that Norman is an importer of retail. So there are sales happening in the city of Norman that are occurring outside of, that people are coming from outside the city of Norman and spending money here. So I imagine that that, that analysis is going to carry through. I mean, he's obviously done a lot of legwork for this kind of Phase 2 analysis. So I think that that is going to be a significant component of, of his report, but I'm happy to echo that to him.
Yeah, I would like to be sure that we put at least somewhat of an emphasis on how this will shift the spending of current residents of Norman. You know, we're, we're a pretty large city. We've got, you know, pretty good spending population, even though we do also import, you know, retail spending from other communities primarily to our south. But how this will shift spending, the current residents of Norman, is also a big factor for me. So if that, I would like to see that addressed in some way, even if the answer is, I can't do it under this current scope, I would want to know that so that I know what to expect from this analysis. Thanks, Emily.
Mr. Bryant? I have you. She answered the question. Okay. Councilmember Castleberry? Never mind. Oops. Councilmember Carter?
Okay.
Your name's not coming up yet. Just your position.
What does this number mean?
It's all while you were talking.
Okay. Thank you for coming, and thank you for sharing your thoughts. And I'd like to begin by, I guess, making a announcement of sorts. I have been a member of a group of over 70 people that have filed a lawsuit, a Freedom of Information lawsuit against the foundation to try and get information disclosed to the public. There's been some question in regard to whether that presents a conflict of interest in my being able to ask questions in regard to this poll project or actually vote on that project. I've been advised by Mr. Bryant that there's, there's no such conflict, but in the spirit of trying to appear and present no grounds for a possible contention that there is some conflict, I am being dismissed from, as a plaintiff in that lawsuit. And just want to make that announcement moving forward, that that shouldn't be something that is being, needed to be considered. So with that being said, I think that I do feel like that lawsuit has merit because I think one of the problems with this whole project has been the lack of transparency and the lack of openness in regard to what the facts and what are the behind-the-scenes negotiations and some of the impact and why it takes so much effort to drag out information, just like the information that Councilman Beerman was talking about. I've served on several foundations. I've been the president of the State Veterinary Medical Foundation. I feel like foundations are intertwined in the same as the groups they represent. And so I think this argument's absurd that this foundation is not part of OU. I think the general public believes in that. I believe this lawsuit has merit. I hope they have success in dragging out information and improving the transparency of this entire process. With that being said, I've got a couple questions. I know one of the things, and just like Representative Beerman was asking, not only are we wondering about the current, the transference of current resident spending, but in addition to that, it is that out-of-town spending. It's an important component of many of the business models of the businesses in this community. It's obvious that students move into this community, and they bring with them resources, and they invest and spend those resources in our community. We have many events that come to this, they're in this community. And so any... And so any transference of revenue that would normally be outside of the Tiff area, whether it's a resident or whether it's with someone that was coming to the area, is important information. But I feel like that spending this money is not appropriate and not necessary because I feel like this essential question's already answered and, but you're going to have to fill me in. I have a few questions for you now. Doesn't UTC, the group, that's the contractor, the developer of the southern, south of Rock Creek, correct? Don't they currently own or have a covenant restricting retail development north of Rock Creek Road?
There is a covenant that runs with the land that restricts retail north of Rock Creek Road, yes.
Okay. Now, why would someone have, why would there be such a covenant? Why would, why do covenants exist?
Jeff might be more appropriate to speak to this, but back when the PUD was adopted in 2006, that was a part of the development strategy that was considered for University North Park.
Yes, that's exactly right. My understanding is, is when the UMP, which owned all of the property to begin with, sold the south half, that is, that property south of Rock Creek Road, to UTC, there was some concern by UTC that UMP would do some retail development north of Rock Creek, and that would impede their ability to fully develop the south half. And so that was part of their negotiation process between them to consummate that sale of the property that was south of Rock Creek. Since then, apparently it's developed well enough, at least is what I understand from the owners of UTC, that they are more than willing to enter into an agreement to waive that covenant because they feel like that their development on the south half, on the retail, would be actually augmented by the entertainment district proposal.
And they, they requested a covenant or some protection, and what would be the reason to limit retail development north of Rock Creek? Would it be to protect their interests south of Rock Creek?
That was my understanding, is UTC, who was going to own all of the property south of Rock Creek, wanted to make sure that they were able to develop that as a retail center. And so they didn't want to be competing with UMP that owned the property on the north half. But again, since then, that's developed at a point where they're willing to waive that restriction because they think this proposal will augment their ability to fully develop the south half.
But the, my point is that they're being protected from cannibalization, right, or transference from further development. That's been the point of this covenant, much like we would be hoping to not, so, so, so seeing this within the south UMP area, we've protected that area for these past 12 years. That would be correct. And now they're, they're wanting to change that.
Actually, they entered to the, entered into the agreement themselves between the two private property owners, and they felt like it was necessary during the negotiation process. So you're, you're correct about that, but I understand from them now that they don't feel like they need that protection. In fact, they embrace the proposal of the entertainment district as it would enhance their ability to finish building out the south half in the way that they wanted to build it out.
Now, is it your, are you aware of any negative consequences to date by the promotional activities of the city and the UMP in marketing the proposed entertainment area, arena, or related retail developments?
Not sure exactly what you're referring to, Councilmember.
I'm just asking if you are aware of any negative consequences that the current south area UTC has experienced. So let's just say, since now that we've started promoting this idea of a new arena, have they experienced, to your knowledge, any negative consequences? For example, has some potential retail investor that wants to lease space from them said, hey, maybe I'm just going to pause for a little while and see what's going to happen here on the north side before we move forward with something on the south side?
My understanding is they do have a retail investor that is interested to see what may get approved on the north half as an encouragement for them to go ahead and invest in the south half. I'm not understanding that as a negative consequence, but actually a positive result of if the north half entertainment district proposal moves forward.
So you're not aware of any serious negative consequences at all?
I, I don't want to quibble with the word serious with you. I'm just relating to you what the UTC representatives have relayed to me.
Okay. Now, so you're just saying UTC is just willingly, with no compensation or at all, to just give up this covenant to the north side of Rock Creek Road? They're just willingly because this is going to be such a boon to their economic activity?
Yeah, I'm not totally aware of, of what compensation may or may not be requested between the private parties. They have not asked the city of Norman for any additional compensation other than what's already involved in the project plan document that was previously approved in 2006.
I'm not aware of any either, and I, I will just to clarify one thing that Mr. Bryant said, the covenant is entered into by the property owners. But, you know, so UTC and UMP, all the relevant property owners, that's not a, a document-
So the city doesn't enter into any kind of intermediating, you know, person between these two groups? You're not aiding in that negotiation at, at all?
Certainly, we've been involved in the discussions between those two parties as a facilitator to see what we can move forward that might be to the greatest benefit to the city of Norman. So yes, we've been involved in those discussions.
In Development Agreement Number 5A, the amended one that was signed in 2016, we talk about penalties that UTC, the current developer of the southern half of the UMP project, are responsible for, for the failure to develop the area to the agreed upon.
Yes, sir. Those, those penalties were focused on the Lifestyle Center development. It was just defined in a prior development agreement.
Now, if, has the city offered to waive these penalties if you and UTC waives their covenant restriction on the north retail development?
There's been some discussion initiated by them along those lines, but there has not been any formal proposal that we have brought to council, no.
But have you made a proposal to those developers?
I've been involved in discussions, Councilmember, but I have not been authorized to make any proposal.
Would part of any type of compensation to UTC also have to do with, do you feel like that this Lifestyle Center is seen to them as a, as an asset or a liability? So if they were to have their, forego their opportunity to achieve, is it foregoing the opportunity to achieve an $8.25 million incentive for the Lifestyle Center, or is it relieving them of an obligation of having to fulfill this Lifestyle Center by, I think it's supposed to, it's in 2023 or something like that?
Redirect.
Lots of different ways to look at that. Again, the latest conversation I've had with the UTC developers is that they're very excited about the Entertainment District proposal on the north, as they feel like that would enhance their ability to fully develop the south half along the lines to meet or exceed the expectations of the Lifestyle Center proposal.
So when you make a proposal on the north side and you would say forbid certain types of businesses, is that protecting certain types of business types? Is that a reason to do that, to prohibit a business in a certain area?
I'm, I'm, I'm going to step in here and whoever may want to answer. And I understand this is your first evening, and, and there's a lot to learn about this. But, but item 13 is a resolution to appropriate money for a contract to do an economic impact study, and that's, that's what we're supposed to be talking about. So we, we've gotten off a little bit here.
My point is this, Mayor, and I, I think it's very ironic because I've yet to speak before you that you haven't cut me off. So I'm starting to get a little hung up about that. But the point is this, is that we know that because these restrictive covenants have been granted to the developers of South UMP, that this is a, is something that prevent cannibalization. We know that there are certain prohibited businesses from these areas like car lots and car washes, for example. You know, why are we subjectively analyzing or signaling them out? I do not know, but I think it's relevant to the discussion. You want to go spend $25,000 more for something we already know the answer to. This is a cannibalization, a transference of business to a very specific area of northwest Norman. It's not good to the, for the general health and well-being, in my opinion, of the corpus of Norman. And I think it is, again, we don't need this type of spending to answer the questions that we already know that this is a, a, a transference of, of revenue. It takes away, it, it prevents and protects certain businesses like car dealers and car washes, but doesn't prevent, I mean, why couldn't a Tesla go in up there, a retail dealership? Why, why do we want to protect, why do we want to let Williams-Sonoma in there where they can cannibalize International Pantry on Lindsay Street? You know there's going to be transference of people coming to Norman for games or living in Norman because of these activities. That's my point. Thank you.
Okay. I think we already know from Mr. Hesensky's initial visit that, that he disagrees with that point. So this is, this is an effort to explore a little further and try to put a, a value to the, the net new. And I know that it's been an important point for council. So I, I think that's what this study will do. And, you know, we might just have, have a, a difference of opinion, but I think hearing from an expert on, on his analysis could be beneficial for the group.
Thank you. Councilmember Wilson.
Thank you, Emily. I actually have a question for our city attorney. And just for the record, I want more information, and I'm okay with that, but I have a process question. And it's, I don't want to be a drama llama, but we, given that this is such a hot button issue, and there's likely to be a lot of scrutiny over decision-making processes that we as a council body are doing, I would like some assurance from the city attorney that the UMP Steering Committee meeting that I was a part of was conducted in a way that cannot be construed as a walking quorum. I do appreciate the efforts to engage and communicate with council members in, in advance, and I'm, I'm concerned that that puts me at risk. That's all I need to know.
Absolutely. The meetings that Councilmember Wilson's referring to, we had two meetings with the mayor and three other council members, one earlier in the week and one later in the week. I believe that was all last week or the week before the Fourth of July, I guess it all runs together. Under Open Records, Open Meetings Act, a meeting is a majority of council members meeting at the same time to discuss city business. That would require five. What we endeavored to do after some of the comments that were made at the prior council meeting about Mr. Hesensky's work is to touch base with council members in a reasonable fashion to determine whether or not they had any interest in moving forward with this particular item. And from those discussions, we did get the idea there was interest in moving forward. I believe that's referenced in the materials here. Certainly no walking quorum. We were not asking for vote commitments of any kind, just trying to get some information to see if council had an interest in moving forward with this particular item. And so that's why it's actually on your agenda tonight, is from the feedback that we got in those smaller group meetings, it, it appeared that there was a, a strong interest by council members that this item be put on the agenda for formal discussion and for a formal vote.
Councilmember Scott.
Brief question and then a very brief statement. Oh, wait, did I go out of order? Oh, okay. So when Councilmember Holman asked this question about how the area would develop anyway, and you said that Mr. Hesensky would be open to, I guess, giving us that information at $5,000, was, is that $5,000 contingent upon the $35,000 that's being proposed? Or is that like, if, is that separate?
So my conversation with Mr. Hesensky was to add that as an add-on. So I, I imagine if there are pieces that council would like to remove, but, but yet add other pieces, you know, that the, that the funds would, would reflect that.
Okay.
But that was in addition to the $35,000 for the economic impact analysis.
Okay. In addition to, got it. And then the other bit is just a statement. It's not for you. It's in general, and it's kind of at the beginning of what Joe was talking about. We were both on the lawsuit. We've been dismissed and so that there's no potential conflict of interest in the future, even though we were advised that there is not. However, I've been pretty outspoken about not using public funds for private development, and so going forward, I won't be supporting this study either because it's allocating more public funds to something I don't support. Just, again, not directed at you, I'm just looking at you.
Sure.
I'd love the opportunity to, to meet with you to talk about some of the merits of the project that I, I believe council should consider if you're open to that.
Yeah, absolutely. And I saw your email. I got my iPad yesterday, so I'm catching up.
Okay.
So I'll get back to you.
Great, thank you.
Councilmember Holman.
Emily, what, so the population growth, will that be part of Mr. Hesensky's formula? Specifically, I hear a lot of discussion that seems to assume that the more businesses we add to Norman, we have zero population growth. But I know for a fact that our city grows by about 2,000 people a year. And so will his, what formula will be looking at? Will he be looking at our projected population growth in some of our long-range plans, or will he be looking at our actual population growth every year since maybe the last census data in 2010?
My understanding is that he will be looking at historic growth and taking that into account moving forward.
New people that move to Norman spend money here, right?
Yes, yes. And, and taking into account that very fact.
Thank you.
Councilmember Beerman.
So I, I don't know that Councilmember Wilson was done with her line of question on that item, but I have a similar concern. You know, when I, I was not aware, when I was asked on Monday, the second, to attend a Steering Committee meeting on Tuesday, the third, that that would be the second in a set of meetings that other council members were attending and asking for deliberation and discussion about this agenda item. And I do feel that specifically because the Oklahoma Attorney General states that the term "business" does include the entire decision-making process, including discussion, deliberation, decision, or formal action, I am concerned about the sense of potential impropriety in having some of these small meetings. I do want more information. I think that this independent analysis could provide some of that. I am a little concerned that we are continuing to fall into a trap of seeming like we are making some of these deliberations or discussions behind closed doors, especially when there were voting members of this body present at both meetings. And considering earlier in the year, we did have a question about this concerning the senior center resolution, to the point that an Open Records Act request was made to ensure no impropriety on that issue, I am just extremely concerned that we are using two different standards for these two issues. So, you know, I want to have these discussions in public where the public can see our deliberations and talk about why we do want to see more information and why we think this independent analysis might be a good idea. But I do have concerns with how that went down. I don't know of any body that has multiple steering committees on the same issue comprised of different voting members of a body. So I do have some concern with that. That being said, you know, not only does this agenda item potentially set funds for future action, it also pays Mr. Hesensky for his previous work. future action, it also pays Mr. Hizinski for his previous work. So, you know, I'm torn on that front. I think if there are maybe two separate agenda items, I could think a little more clearly about them individually. I don't like the thought of not paying someone for work that they've already conducted. But I do think that as a public body, we need to err on the side of being as public as possible, particularly considering an item like this is so contentious. There has been a lot of concern and fear and, you know, and a sense that maybe not all of this was done in the light of day. So I just want to put that out there. You know, I have some concerns with how that went down.
Councilmember Castleberry.
I just want to say I'm going to support this because I want additional information. I think we have talked about all the studies we've had, is one of the questions that we had is what is the net new? And none of our previous studies by any of those groups talked about net new. So I'm glad we're doing this to get that net new number. But I do want to say that just because we get this study does not mean I'm going to vote for it. I mean, if this study comes back horrible, that influences my decision. If it comes back great, that probably influences my decision. I know that Councilman Bierman said before that you wanted additional information and this study would be impactful on the decision-making process. And so I think, and Councilman Hickman requested it back in October, November, I think we've all kind of requested additional information. And so I think this is good information to have. I like the process that we're going through to get that number. And so I think this is part of our due diligence. This is potentially a huge project. Some people would say it's a disaster, some people would say it's great. Either way, I think you need to know, we need to have as much information as possible to know whether we're making the right decision or making the wrong decision. And so I think this is another piece of that information that we all need to decide which way we're going to go, so.
Councilmember Wilson, do you want me to come back to you before we go to Councilmember Clark? Okay, Councilmember Clark.
I agree with Councilmember Castleberry. We asked for this. Just reminding everyone what happened. I know we tend to have a selective memory sometimes on this council, but we did in fact ask for this, so I too plan to support it. And I want to thank you officially, formally, for all of the work that you have done, Emily. We have very passionate residents in the city of Norman, and it can be difficult at times. Nobody is ever coming after you personally, I want you to know that, and I value all of the time and effort that you put into this project because I know it just builds. So thank you. But I do, you know, just for the education of everyone watching and in the audience and on council, the money comes from the allocated UMP TIF revenue. Can you describe a little bit more about what those allocated revenues can be used for?
There are TIF revenues allocated for implementation costs.
And this is from the current?
Under the existing project plan that was adopted in 2006. I believe that those are the funds that are being used to pay for this study, and it's absolutely appropriate for implementation of the project. You know, our project was a planned 25-year project, and, you know, we're 12 years in. So we're still in the process of analyzing Phase Two of this very long-term project.
So this doesn't come out of the general fund?
No, no, this does not come out of the general fund.
Thank you.
Councilmember Wilson, we still haven't had public comment.
Okay, well, I too want to say thank you for your work. And I know that I've kind of publicly criticized a lot of the processes, and I hope everyone knows that I'm more of a process-critical and not personal-critical or necessarily your organization or the HVS. But I actually do feel it's important that we follow the process, and I feel especially as a young council with lots of new members, that it's important that we understand the very technical battlefield, like minefield that we are actually maneuvering when we get called into meetings. And so I am not going to support this tonight because I'm not comfortable making a decision to allocate funds with that kind of a process error that I feel is egregious hanging there. So it's not any reflection to you, it's actually more of a cleanup of the process, in my opinion, because I do feel like there was members that overlapped and there was a quorum between the two, so I'm going to not support it for that. So, sorry.
At this time, this is the time when we will take comments from the public or questions.
Hey, everyone. Evan Dunn, 1400 Garfield Avenue, representing myself and Citizen Solutions. I enjoyed listening to a lot of the comments there, brought up some very valid points. Joe, Alexandra, I'm thrilled you're on council. I did not know that you two were part of the Freedom of Information Request Act lawsuit, and amen, we need it. I don't know, I haven't looked at the foundation's balance sheets, but I know they have 1.4, 1.6 billion. And if they are pushing this hard to get a study done, to get this approved, that says to me that they either see large macroeconomic chaos coming, and they want to get cheap money here by having everything finalized, contracts sealed, boom, everything is done, I can hire X amount of employees, it makes life easier for a lot of people, bumps up real estate values, addresses a lot of our short-term issues. However, it's more spectacle. We've got plenty of spectacle. If we want to create a transcendent community, I'm not against development at all. I want development, but I want the development that we put into place. I want our resources to be invested in creating this connective community, the far east side to the interstate. We have to draw people, because I-35 is intercontinental, so is I-40. These aren't just interstates, these are intercontinental thoroughfares. We have to brand Norman as being not just the intercontinental automobile thoroughfare crossroads, but a rail thoroughfare. If we want to put in spectacle or put in some regional draw, you put it in over there by Lake Thunderburg. You put in a giant botanical gardens and have Native American teepees and all these other cultural things that can be educative and can be accessible. And anyone who wants to go, or they're coming to a football game, or they're going out to the botanical gardens, or they're going to go out to the state park, they have to come through, just like the grocery store. You're going to get milk and eggs, you got to walk past all of everything else that's processed to get there. Who knows what you might buy? You get into the aisle, oh, just for a dollar. That technique ought to be implied by this corporation. Every other corporation competes like that. We need to use those same techniques to maximize the quality of life, to maximize the revenue that we can generate. And the moment I heard there was an arena, I was done on it. I didn't need any data. I wish Emily and all of our teams who assess the data, I wish you didn't have to do this. I wish we could collaborate, work at a federal level, get with Inhofe, get with Tom Cole, get with Gallagher, get with these powerful influential minds, and figure out a way of flipping the script, changing the critics who think Oklahoma is just this red backward state, you're ruled by the oil and natural gas industry, and change that brand. We're more than just football, sports, and spectacle. There's these awesome transcendent components. And a study like this, I don't think we need it. Let's conserve our resources and put them somewhere else.
Thank you. Other comments from the audience? Well, I'm going to, okay, Councilmember Holman.
I'm just going to say this is information that I know I asked for and is extremely important to how I will make my decision on this issue going forward, so I am going to support this tonight and go from there. Thank you.
Councilmember Clark.
Same. I would like to, I guess, a reminder of everyone that asked to postpone for the information. And I know that there are concerns about small meetings, but I feel like we're killing a completely separate issue based on small meetings, which all you had to do was ask if they were more than one meeting. And I don't think that's very fair to those of us that have asked for more information. So I am frustrated by that.
Councilmember Wilson.
I would like more information. I asked for more information. I asked, I believe I voted yes to postpone until I had more information. However, I don't understand why we had to do the small meetings to ask whether or not we would support an effort to get more information when we sat in a council meeting and asked for it. And in that effort to do that, we had what I think and what my opinion is, and I know I'm not a lawyer, but that we had crossover in voting persons into both meetings and we had a quorum. So that is a definition of a walking quorum. So I am only trying to hold the process to the fire at this point. I'm sorry. But we are under tight scrutiny, and I'm not going to vote for something that seems or could look like or could put me in a situation where I have to defend, where I have to answer to my constituents of why I was having meetings like this. I was invited to a steering committee meeting, that's what it was called. I didn't know I was on a steering committee. I didn't know I would need to ask if there were multiple steering committees. I thought I was being asked for my opinion. And I was also, you know, having a conversation to get to know the other attorney better, which I appreciated. And I actually appreciate the effort to get, you know, that information, but I just didn't understand it. And then, you know, a week later, I found out there were multiples of them. So then I am very concerned. I don't want to go to jail, y'all. So that's the thing. There's the end.
Councilmember Bierman.
So I don't think that the burden should be on any individual council member to check in and see what other meetings may or may not be held. We don't know what we don't know, and we don't know what to ask. And so the way emails are phrased, the way invitations are made, have a strong impact. And I don't know about many of you, but I have never seen multiple steering committees for a single issue. And it would not be difficult to say, we are reaching out to every council member to sit in meetings to tell us how they feel. And then council members can make the decision whether or not they want to participate in that. At the same time, we are facing what is already looking like a very cloak-and-dagger backroom process. This is an issue of public trust. And so I'm still, I mean, I think it's going to come down to the minute I push that button, I still don't know how I'm going to vote on this because while I don't like the way the process went down, I do want this information. I'm still not 100% convinced it's going to give me everything that I think it should have in it. I also think that Mr. Hizinski deserves to be paid for the work he's already done. But I too am taking exception to how this process happened. All it takes is one voting member of this body to know how four other voting members of this body are going to act for it to be a walking quorum. And so I'm not, I don't like how this went down. I don't know whether or not my vote on this is going to be buying into that process, but I want the information. It's information that I asked for, like Councilmember Clark said, it's information that we postponed in order to get. And it's not going to come at us tomorrow, even if we approve it tonight, it's going to take several weeks. So I still don't know how I'm going to vote, but I really take exception to how this process went down. I appreciate being asked for input. I don't appreciate knowing that a majority of council members with voting members of this body participating in both meetings were asked. I think it would have been just as easy to have had individual meetings without one voting member overlapping to avoid this. That's all it would have taken, and that's not what happened. So it's going to come down to the wire for me because I don't like the process, but I want the information. But I want to be really sensitive to the process because we're facing a trust deficit in this city, and this doesn't help.
Count Evan. Mr. Bryant.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to clarify the issue about the appropriation in the prior work. Certainly, we had the $25,000 that was available in the city manager's general fund budget when we asked Mr. Hizinski to move forward with his work on the 25th. Crafting this particular resolution so that all of the funding for Mr. Hizinski came out of accumulated TIF revenues was actually a request by Councilmember Wilson, who wanted to make sure that this money was not being spent out of the general fund, that we use it out of the UMP TIF fund. So that's the reason we did it this way. If you don't want to do it that way, we can certainly take the $25,000 out of the general fund as we started to begin with. I can also tell you, just on my 30 years of practice of municipal law, you do not have a legal problem with the way that the meetings were held to get your input on this particular issue. We did not ask for any votes by any council members. It was city staff primarily, and Ms. Pomeroy asking whether or not it was the interest of council for us to move forward and put an item like this on the agenda for your full consideration in an open, public meeting, and that's what we're doing tonight. So you might remember from some of your OML training, if you rely on the advice of your city attorney on matters such as this, then it will protect you from personal and criminal liability. So you're covered here. We were very careful in the way we put these meetings together to make sure that you were not in an exposed position. So whether you agree with that or not, that's certainly your prerogative, but that would be my legal advice to you.
Councilmember Castleberry.
I would just like to say, as a senior member of council, I've been involved over the past seven years in a lot of these small group meetings, from Mayor Rosenthal to Mayor Miller, and the idea is for three or four council members to get together and say, is this something you want to put on the agenda? Not, are you going to vote for it or are you not, are you going to vote? No. Same thing as when we have a study session. We don't vote in study sessions. We don't vote in these prior meetings. But we do give staff direction on which way we want to go. A lot of that is just administratively. If everybody says, no, I don't want to put on the agenda. If there's not enough people to put on the agenda, that's the same thing as Rule Three, is put something on the agenda. So there's a mechanism here to basically figure out, staff, we want you to work on this, we don't want you to work on this type of thing. And at no time during those meetings, I ever feel like I was asked whether I'm for this or against it. It was, do you want to put this on the agenda to vote on? It's just like, we just had a meeting about Airbnb, you know, do we want to go forward with it, do we not want to go forward with it? Not, are you for this, are you against this? That's kind of the process of how we do government. As far as figuring out how council members can vote, I can tell you, the past three or four years, I have no idea how we're going to vote at any meeting we go to. I've given up trying to play those tarot cards as how we're going to vote on things. I think if you ask anybody in the public, they have no idea how we're all going to vote because I think it's a good thing. I think we're all independent. I think everybody has their own views and brings their perspectives. And so I don't think that we're trying to feel out how everybody's going to vote, whether we have a quorum or a walking quorum. I think having meetings and emails are much more subject to walking quorum as opposed to, let's have an actual meeting down at City Hall with staff and talk about stuff. are much more subject to walking quorum as opposed to, let's have an actual meeting down at City Hall with staff and talk about stuff. There are times when we have to get together as council members and talk about things, whether that's over lunch or in these small groups to brainstorm, to get these things going. That's all this, to me, that's all I saw this, was it brainstorming? Do we want to go forward with it? So I, I don't have any problem with this. And I've brought up the issue of walking quarrels before, so I'm very conscious of this type of thing. So I'm very comfortable with it. Again, as Councilmember Clark said, we voted six to three, seven to, I can't remember exactly what it was, to postpone going to the statutory review committee until we had additional study done to figure out what the net new was. Now we're doing the net new report. So I'm kind of, yeah, that's like, sometimes you think you, based on that information, I would say it ought to be six, three to vote for this. But I don't think it's going to be that. I have no idea. Um, so I just think this is part of the process as far as going forward. And this study, this study doesn't bind anybody. It's just additional information. It's part of our due diligence. If you're talking about a, depending upon how you want to frame this, a hundred million dollars, which is not all from the city. It's also from the taxing jurisdictions also. Or you're talking about this a $500 million project. To spend another $25,000 or I guess 60 total is due diligence. And I'm going to support this. And again, I don't have any problem with the process as far as we did. Because now, if we go to those meetings and you ask me, how are you going to vote on it? Then I'm going to get up and walk out. That's a different deal. Staff does not do that. They know better. They're not, they're not going to put us in that situation. So I'm, I'm very comfortable with this. And but I can understand the hesitations of some that, I can understand that. But I'm, I don't have those same reservations and I want this additional information. I think the public wants this additional information. It will be scrutinized. Trust me, it will be scrutinized by the public and I think that's good. It should be, so.
Councilmember Wilson.
Okay, I don't want to beat the dead horse, but we, we said, we asked for this in a meeting. So I don't understand why we had to have an additional meeting to figure out why, you know, whether or not we wanted it on agenda because we absolutely wanted it on the agenda. And I was asked if I was going to knock this down to, uh, are you going to knock this down and move on? Or, or, or do you feel like you can support this? So for me, no, if I would have known that there would be additional meetings with additional council members and who all was involved, I'd have made a very different decision on what that conversation looked like. So, um, it's actually a little bit of a, um, kind of an affront to my intelligence as to what, you know, we were doing in that meeting. So I'm not comfortable with that. I'm, I'm really disappointed that we're at this place tonight, having this discussion, because I fully supported the information. I would have voted for it until I found out that there are other people having meetings and what was said was identical to what was said in my meeting. So you guys can, you know, pat me on the head and say it's silly, but I'm going to hold you guys to this process.
Mr. Bryant.
Thank you, Mayor. Actually, uh, it, it was really more of gathering input from council members. If you'll notice in your agenda item, uh, one of the meetings, we actually had suggestions from two different council members. Uh, one, Councilmember Hickman, about adding some additional work that would take a look at actually what Councilmember Holman just mentioned. And I think you were in a different meeting. Um, but the idea of seeing what additional, uh, development might occur without this project. And then I, and I think there was also a suggestion from Councilmember Beerman in one of the meetings, and all this is in the materials. This is all light of day. Nobody's hiding anything. Uh, but a question from Councilmember Beerman about what happens if there's a recession in seven or 10 years or something. And so those, both of those questions, after we gathered that information from council members, Emily posed those to Mr. Hizinski. And we got, uh, some cost estimates. I think it was 5,000 apiece. So it would add, uh, uh, $10,000 to the total cost. Uh, I think later though, we shared that information with Councilmember Beerman. I think she said, uh, and I'm not going to try and put words in your mouth, but I think you said maybe that is not as important of a question for you. And so maybe if we went forward with Councilmember Hickman's suggestion, that's fine. So we put all of this in the memo. So I'm, I'm mentioning this because if you do want to add the additional, uh, item that Councilmember Holman suggested tonight, which actually was originally suggested by Councilmember Hickman in one of the small group meetings, you'd need to make a motion to amend this particular resolution to add another $5,000, uh, to the funding source. And then, uh, Emily would make sure that that additional question got added to the scope of services.
Would you like to make that amendment? Would you like to make that amendment?
I'd like to make that amendment. I think that's a very important piece of that information that again, uh, will give us information about that area regardless of if we do this arena proposal or not. This area is going to develop at some point. I would like to know how the development of this area, regardless of what it is, will impact the rest of the city.
Any discussion? Okay, wait a minute. I'm, okay, this is, I'm, I'm sorry. It's confusing because we still have the old council, the previous council members' names on there. So I'm trying to remember who's, who, Councilmember Carter.
Well, I have comments in related to prior to this amendment, so I'll hold.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Castleberry.
Just on this amendment, Emily, will this be, if we're talking about developing it as it would on its own? It's my understanding that how it develops on its own, it will not, an arena will not be part of developing on its own. It would just be commercial and the, the PUD would just be, so will he look at it? Will they provide analysis as this is the, with the arena and then without the arena? Is that, is that how the, would look or how would it?
So, uh, Mr. Hizinski is considering the project as the RTKL, the Kalson RTKL master plan, which includes not just the entertainment districts with the arena and parking garage, but also, um, the residential build out. Um, he will, uh, so no project analysis will not include those things. It will include an assumption of some development on the north. Um, considering the covenant that runs with the land, it will not be, uh, commercial. It would be consistent with the PUD.
That's what I'm saying, it'd be consistent with the current PUD.
Correct.
As is, and which does not have the additional, uh, commercial, which means we're not allowed for the arena. And so that, that's what, that's, uh, that's the information I think I want to get is, what is it if we do nothing and what is it if we do this?
Right.
And that's, that's information that they will come back to us.
That's right.
Okay, that's the analysis I want to do.
Okay, I just want to comment, and we've had this conversation before, you know, our analysis looked at, um, a third of the development would occur. He will have some different number. I mean, it's speculation because there's no, there's only one project on the table. So it's speculation. I, I just want to make that clear. Um, but he will use the information that he has as, has at his disposal. He'll use historic growth of Norman, you know, to understand who's coming in. He will, uh, take into account, um, what the property might be sold for, for which purposes, for which land uses the property might be sold.
But you're still going to have the, the PUD is the underlying, the current PUD is going to be the underlying.
Correct.
Analysis, because that's what it is.
Correct.
You're not going to make an assumption that we're going to amend the PUD or, you know, you can't make those assumptions, correct?
I don't think he could reasonably make those assumptions.
Then, then given that, I'm comfortable with, with, uh, adding this amendment on here.
Any other, okay, Councilmember Carter. Comments from the audience?
Oh, Evan Dunn, 1400 Garfield. I'm not clear now. Emily, Robert asked you if the assessment that Hovinsky's going to do is going to take into account the assessment based on all those assumptions and the historical trends with the arena and without the arena. That to me has much more relevance. Not much, but it has a little bit more. Can you clarify that for me, Emily? Are there, so there are two separate data researches, projects that Hovinsky's going to do, estimates.
Please.
Okay, I will read from the agenda packet.
It would be polite if you'd sit down while she's talking.
Okay. This is, I'm reading from the agenda packet. Councilmember Hickman suggested an additional service be added to the scope that would include an assessment of impacts if the project occurs compared with impacts if the project does not occur. The scope of services proposed already anticipates estimating the net new economic impact of the TIF development for stabilized year of demand. However, HBS is willing to expand their scope to estimate the annual recurring impacts during each year of the 10-year build out of UMP. HBS would plan to compare the annual impacts with an alternative scenario in which UMP develops at a slower rate in the absence of the TIF incentives. So it would be analyzing what would happen without this public investment to incentivize the private investment. It would need to do that on facts that exist current with the property. So the covenant would exist. There would be no arena. There would be no public incentives to incentivize the build out of the Kalson RTKL master plan.
Any other public comments? Mr. Burke.
Yes, uh, Mac Burke's 2131 Jazzman Drive. Uh, I just had a clarifying question. This might be for Jeff Bryant. I don't know if you even really have to address it right now. But you made, Joe Carter made mention earlier of, uh, some part of the agreement that already exists for the southern part that would preclude, was it retail north of Rock Creek Road?
That's where we're doing the zoning.
What's that?
The, the, the PUD. That's why we're looking at changing the zoning for the entertainment district because there is a restriction on, on commercial.
Okay, right.
North of Rock Creek.
So I guess just to Councilmember Holman's point, you know, about it developing anyway, I guess if that weren't lifted, then there could be no retail there, I guess. It would just be the.
Unless they came in and asked, I mean, if, if they were, if someone else was just going to develop it on their own or a whole bunch of different people were going to go up there and buy pieces and develop it, then, then you would, you would look at that. But right now, there is, there's a restriction.
Huh.
Because it was, it was envisioned to be housing and offices and industrial. That's what it was envisioned. The south part was envisioned to be primarily retail. The north part was envisioned to be offices and houses and apartments and.
Gotcha. I guess, yeah, I was just getting to the point of, would it develop on its own? Really, if that were still a restriction?
There, there are two documents that restrict retail north of Rock Creek. Uh, one is the current zoning. The current PUD does not allow retail north of Rock Creek. And then also the covenant that Mr. Carter, or Councilmember Carter, mentioned. Uh, the covenant that runs with the land also restricts retail north of Rock Creek.
Got it, all right.
It's a private covenant, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, will we still have public comments?
Casey Holcomb Ward for, uh, I'd just like to say that this doesn't need to go any further. Uh, there's been so many, uh, broken promises. I don't agree with throwing money down this hole any longer. Uh, it's going to develop on its own, uh, but that's also the same guarantee. It's also the same, uh, reason the original TIF package was sold to us. It's like, we want to have planned growth. We want to have managed growth. And that's not what's happened. So you're going to say it's going to happen this time? I don't believe that. And none of you up here making votes for this should believe that the second time around. It's not going to happen. And you know this. And don't act like you don't. You know this is a scam. And every one of you who votes for this, I mean, I would think you should be ashamed of yourselves to be throwing money, uh, down the hole like this. And those of you who do vote for it in continuing to perpetuate this scam, I'll save my words, I'll save my words for miscellaneous discussion, I suppose.
Councilmember Carter. Oh, do we still have public comments?
Uh, there might be a compromise. You know, the study that was requested last fall was an independent outside study. What you're suggesting is a study by an inside group that, uh, many of us are not happy with. Um, there are other companies, other financial consultants that you could look at if you really wanted to study. Uh, part of this money, as I understand, also is to pay for what has already been done. And I'm sure the council wants to pay their bills. I mean, I, everybody agrees with that, I, I would hope. But getting a new study requires, in my opinion, the public wants an independent, independent group to do this study. And, uh, the, uh, HBS says that they don't, they can't tell us what their track record is on their previous studies. We, we could go with somebody else. The, uh, that might be a way to go, I guess. I mean, there are a lot of other financial consultants in the world. Thank you. I, I really would appreciate, uh, I, I do appreciate all the work that, uh, people have been digging into this, looking into this, wooling it over, um, uh, the, especially trying to get information, which has really been hard. And, uh, some people have really, have really, uh, gone above and beyond the, the call of duty to, to find out for the public exactly what's going on. And I think that, uh, I, I really appreciate those folks who have been doing that.
Okay, uh, Ms. Pomeroy. I'm, I'm not sure why this isn't independent. I'm, I'm not understanding, this is somebody that's out of Chicago that does this all the time, um, that has consulted with Oklahoma City and other places. I don't, I don't understand why that's not, what is not independent about that. That's one of the reasons this person was chosen.
Thank you, Mayor. I, um, that's exactly right. And we did a, um, specific conflicts check with Mr. Hizinski when we approached HBS about taking on this work. Um, there, it's, there's no connection, um, to the OU Foundation, uh, the University of Oklahoma or any of its entities. Um, as I told you last time, um, there was a, uh, study, a feasibility study that HBS did in 2005, um, on the, uh, Conference Center. Um, that's the only, only work they've done for the city of Norman. Um, they, they are, you know, I'm your consultant. I'm a consultant to the city of Norman. And this is another consultant, uh, that, that was engaged to examine this project. So I respectfully disagree with the comment. And Mr. Hizinski isn't here to speak for himself. So I, I just want to say that he was very clear with me. We had a very frank discussion about his, um, independ, his ability to provide an independent analysis. He has no skin in the game on this.
Thank you. Councilmember, what? Okay, Councilmember Carter.
Uh, Mr. Bryant, so if UTC, since they own the covenant or possess the covenant, if they decided to develop retail north of Rock Creek with a zoning change approved by this council, they could move forward with that, correct?
I don't think UTC owns any of the property north. Is that what you're asking?
If they were to work out an agreement with the owners of the property. If they were to work out an agreement with the owners of the property on the north side, could they, since, they would not be forbidden by anything other than the zoning that you mentioned earlier.
The, the covenant runs with all the land, and so there are several owners of the land right now. It's not just UTC.
With a owner.
Several of them have.
Do they all possess covenants, forbidding other people, other owners within that area from developing retail in that area? Or is the only covenant possessed by UTC?
The covenant runs with the land, so it applies to the entire 560 acres. And so any owner of the land on the south can rely on that covenant unless the covenant's changed.
How many owners are in the south? Twenty-two?
I don't, I don't think that number's right. I can get that for you. I don't know off the top of my head. I'd be glad to get that for you.
Okay, that's fine, I don't need it.
Councilmember Castleberry.
Just for clarification, I don't know, this is probably Jeff. The current PUD allows up to 10% of commercial, correct?
North of, north of Rock Creek?
Yeah.
No, the, the current PUD does not allow any commercial north of Rock Creek.
Can I ask?
The proposal.
Can I ask Mr. Recker to clarify that for me? Because I always thought that the, the proposed, the PUD amendment that we got postponed was taking it from 10 to 14%, or, could you clarify that for me? Because questions come up as, will there be any commercial as-is?
I'd be happy to, Councilmember, and Mr. Bryant's correct. Right now, currently, the PUD only allows for residential, industrial, and office north of Rock Creek.
You're taking from industrial to commercial?
We are changing the percentages. So here's the, the way the existing PUD was done in 2006, it had a percentage of allowances for uses, and we would change the percentage of commercial from 50 to 57, and that 7% would be allowable north of Rock Creek Road.
Okay, thank you. I thought that was.
Final council comments?
I want to make a couple of comments here. One is about, since I've been on the council five years, we have had regular small group meetings over all sorts of things, just with individual council members, just with staff, just with members of the community, just with neighborhoods. It is part of the way that we do our business, and I have never heard so many accusations about every time some small group gets together, that there's, there's something going on. We cannot make every single solitary decision we make. We get piles of information. We have to have times that we can talk to one another, and we have to have times when we can talk to staff, and we can talk to our consultants and everybody else. And I, I just, I don't see what the problem is with that, and I don't know how we can operate if we're not able to do that. The idea that we can do every single thing up here or in there is, it's just an impossibility. But we don't do one thing. We don't make any final decisions without being in front of you, ever. We don't make final decisions. We don't take votes. We don't do that. And this whole thing about all of the, all of the secrecy and all this stuff, there have been multiple meetings. I don't feel like, if there's some kind of secret stuff that the, that, that the foundation has, or the university has, or somebody else has, I haven't seen it. Everything I have seen, anyone that wants to see it, has seen it. So I'm, I'm just telling you that. I'm in the middle of this, and if there's a bunch of secret stuff, I'm not in on it because I'm not hearing secret stuff. I'm hearing the stuff that, that sometimes we do look at it before we come to a meeting, but then the public sees it. We don't make a decision about it. And this is a huge, important decision, and I, I really do not think we are doing our due diligence if we don't get all the information that we can possibly get about it. It's easy for people on Facebook to say to me, vote yes, vote no. I'm not ready to vote on anything yet. I'm ready to get all the information I need to make a really good decision about this huge financial thing. It could be terrible, it could be really good for our community in the long run. And unless you've studied the whole thing, you, you, you don't know either one of those things. And that's what I'm going to do. I'm going to keep on as long as we have an opportunity to do it. I'm going to keep on looking at information and not make up my mind until I have the information that I need. I think this is critical, what we're getting ready to vote on. It is a critical piece. All sorts of council members have had input to say, I think we need to do this, I think we need to do that, things I hadn't even thought about. I think it's great. They're doing your business for you, but I think this is an important piece of information that we need to make our, our, our final decision about whether or not we're going to move forward or whether we're not going to move forward.
Oh, I got off the amendment.
The motion on the floor is to amend the resolution to add an additional $5,000 for the assessment of impacts if the project occurs versus does not occur. That's the motion on the floor.
We don't have all the votes.
Yeah, it's time for. I'm sorry. Okay, all votes have been cast, and the motion to amend passes by a vote of five to four, voting against Councilmember Carter, Councilmember Wilson, Councilmember Hickman, Councilmember Scott.
All right, this brings us back to the original motion.
As amended.
As amended. Any final comments from the council? Councilmember Carter.
Mayor, I think it's, just learning of this two organized, I'm calling them secret meetings between four city council members is far different than you and I going to Starbucks in Brookhaven and having coffee. It's far different than you and me dropping by your office, Robert, and talking about the TIF and getting, you know, a, a little debate about that. It's far different than sitting in this study session that's open to the public. So the perception of this, well, according to our counselor, may be that it's, the letter of the law, I don't believe this is going to be perceived as something that is open, and I think it leads, it's a reflection of this entire process of this whole UNP discussion where there's a perceived, there's a serious lack of trust in this body sitting up here and in city government by the citizens of our community. And, and a vote for this is a vote for what I believe is going to be perceived as a corrupt process. I think we should adamantly defeat this measure.
Councilmember Beerman.
So I voted for the amendment because I think that information is going to be critical. But I still have not made up my mind on this, this final vote, because I largely agree with Councilmember Carter. We are facing, like I said before, a serious trust deficit in this city on this issue and others, and I think we need to be painfully aware of that in everything that we do. And I really take exception to the fact that voting members of this body carried knowledge of what a majority of council wished on an item. I don't care whether or not I was asked for my vote. I care that we were asked to deliberate in private in two separate meetings in which a voting member of this body was present in both of them. If they had been two separate meetings in which less than a quorum sat and discussed and shared information with the city manager, I mean, city manager has asked for input from us before via email, and we've all sent just him our thoughts on something, that's not what this was. This was not two groups of three or two groups of four sharing feedback with just city staff. And so I, I want this information. I believe that HBS may or, you know, may not be the right group to give it to us, but I want this information. I don't like this process, and especially on an issue like this when there is such a trust deficit, I want to painfully err on the side of doing things publicly. That's all.
Final comments? Councilmember Clark.
Due diligence, leadership, those things hopefully mean something to everybody up here. We have a chance to get more information. If once we get the information, you want to vote no, you have that opportunity. Just remember that. We asked for more information, this is the opportunity to get that, and I hope you will support the ability to get more information. We have the responsibility to take this very big decision seriously with as much information as we can possibly get, and here's our chance. And if we get it and we don't like it, we can vote no.
Final comments? Councilmembers, you may cast your vote.
All votes have been cast, and the motion to adopt as amended fails by a vote of four to five, voting in favor, Councilmember Holman, Councilmember Clark, Councilmember Castleberry, Mayor Miller.
Okay, item number 31. Is an ordinance to remove the prohibition against elected city officials endorsing or opposing other candidates for office from the city council ethics ordinance. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on second reading.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Christine Abell, Assistant City Attorney. The PowerPoint going to come? Oh. Let's keep going, okay. Is it loaded? Look at the arrow. Oh, okay, I'm going backwards. Sorry, okay. And, so this ordinance, and we are discussing a, an amendment to the city council ethics ordinance that would pertain to removal of endorsement or opposition prohibition from the city council ethics ordinance. The current language is found in section 2-103 subsection A 7B. It reads, "An elected city official shall not use his office to endorse or impose any candidate for office." This proposed amendment was discussed in oversight committee meetings that were held on September 21st of 2017, as well as October 19th, 2017. During those meetings, the committee discussed whether or not this language should be amended so that the prohibition extended only to endorsement or opposition of candidates for fellow city offices. And then there was also discussion over moving the entire provision in its entirety, and it was proposed to send that to city council for their, for your full deliberation. It was discussed at a December 19th council conference, as well as a May 29th study session. During the May 29th study session, one of the things that you all asked us to do was to look at some other large cities to see if they had any kind of similar language or prohibition. Staff, we did review the charters, as well as the code provisions for Oklahoma City, Tulsa, Moore, Edmond, Lawton, and Midwest City, and did find that none of them do have a similar prohibition. Some of the considerations that you all discussed was whether or not endorsing or opposing another candidate for office, whether or not that's really a conflict or an ethical question, as opposed to perhaps just a political question with potential political ramifications. Several council members expressed that they thought that whether or not to engage in endorsement or opposition of other political candidates should be more of a personal decision for each council member. We also discussed there are some First Amendment implications when talking about political speech, and some of the other discussions was, what is the scope of endorsement or advocacy, and how do you define what is use of office? At this time is staff's recommendation to remove this particular provision, and it's lined, annotated up there, of just removing the entire language in its entirety, and I'd be happy to answer any questions or feedback.
Any comments? Councilmember Castleberry.
Christine, this is a provision that I've struggled with since I've been on council. I'm glad we're actually looking at removing it. Let me ask you, violating this particular provision or any provision of our ethics code, what are the ramifications for that?
In removing the provision?
No, just, of any, any of the provisions in our ethics code. If we violate the ethics code, whether it's this provision or one of the other ones, what are the, the ramifications?
The way that the ethics code is written right now, it does not have specific penalty provisions. It does provide that any questions or complaints can be directed to the city attorney's office for review or to answer questions, but there is not a specific penalty provision included in the ordinance.
So there's always this kind of, this, this carrot and hammer thing we talk about. There, there's no hammer here. This provision has no teeth to it. And so my thoughts on this is, if we're going to leave it in here, then let's put some teeth into it. Let's make it, if we think it's important enough to leave in there, then we need to make it important enough to have some ramifications for having in there. If there's no ramifications for having in there, then take it out. It's too hard to enforce. I believe that when we are out in the public, it is too hard for people to know whether we are individuals or whether we are council members. It is my belief that we are always council members in public, unless we're talking to people we have known for a long time, we're talking with friends, it's, and I, and I've struggled with this, it's, it's hard to say, hey, I just want to tell you something, as Robert Castleberry, I think this person would be a great elected official, as opposed to me just saying, yeah, I think, I think they did a good job. Well, when you ask me that, I don't know if you're asking me that as me personally, or you're asking me that as a council member who should know this kind of stuff, especially if it's a local city deal. And I think it's too hard for us to clarify that. And so I, I, I think this is an enforceable provision, it's a hard provision. And I do think sometimes people want to know what we think as elected officials, because we're in that sphere, and maybe our endorsement actually is a negative for that person, you know, or our opposition could be, so it works both ways, just because we endorse somebody or oppose somebody does not necessarily mean it's a good thing for them, they may not want us to. I just think it's too hard to enforce, and I really'd like to see us take this out of here. Or let's put some teeth into it. And I don't, from the meetings that we had, there wasn't any appetite to put teeth into it, so I'm glad we're looking at removing this. I just think it's too hard to, to do, and again, I, I, whether we want to do it, I'm one of those that thinks it's a political decision, whether you want to do it or not. I mean, if I oppose Joe, or I like Joe, and he gets in or doesn't get in, that, that could come back, you know, a, a, as somebody who went through a public vote on city council, who had four council members vote against him, and four council members vote for him, I can tell you, I think. vote against him, and four council members vote for him, I can tell you, I think I'm a big person, I think I can put things behind me, but I am an individual. And I can name all four of those people that voted for me, and all four of those people vote against me. So, is it a good political, I think everybody makes a political decision whether they do or not, and I think they should have that right. But is it unethical? I don't think that this rises to the level of being unethical. I think unethical is breaking the public trust, stealing money, doing those type of things, not what my First Amendment speech is. So I would like to encourage my other council members, let's just get rid of this. It's too hard, we've had people trip up over it, we've had this in the past, and I think every time this has been violated, it's been unintentional. You know, and it's just, I really'd like to see us clean this up. So I'm going to fully support this.
Councilmember Wilson.
I support this as well, because it is, as Councilmember Castleberry said, it's very hard to determine if you're having a private conversation with a friend, you know, it's, it's, and then, it's hard to, it's hard to determine when you're a council member. And, and, you know, and people file ethics complaints. It's weird, and it hurts your reputation if you're inadvertently having what you thought was a private conversation, and somebody files an ethics complaint against you. It actually hurts your reputation, because it sounds so big, like, well, you had an ethics complaint against you for having a private message on a Facebook or something like that. So I actually support this, because, you know, we should have the freedom to do those kinds of things. Also, I'll point out, I remember which ones voted against me and which ones voted for, four to four, and a drawing out of the hat. I'm just saying. I remember.
Councilmember Holman.
I agree with fellow council members. I've been in on every committee meeting, council meeting in regard to this issue. Again, the ordinance has zero teeth to it. After many meetings discussing it, none of us could agree on what any consequence should be. My personal opinion is that I don't believe it's my job to police the conduct of the other eight members of this body. Their voters and their wards will hold them accountable if they're unethical. And unless there's just something so egregious, criminal activity or something, I don't, again, I don't see my job as to police what these people do up here. And even then, if there's criminal activity, they're probably not going to be up here anyway. So that was another reason why I came to this conclusion. In the beginning, I had advocated that I don't think city council members should engage in endorsing or opposing candidates for city council or mayor in the city of Norman. But I do think that if somebody comes to me, I've been a city council member for five years now, and says, Stephen, I don't really know much about all the people running for state office, what do you think about it? If I tell somebody, well, you know what, I'm voting for Drew Edmondson in November, could that be interpreted as an endorsement? Because if I'm always serving as a city council member, if I say that I'm voting for anybody, that could be an endorsement. I have committed an ethics violation under this ordinance, because I encourage people to run against and vote out District Attorney Greg Mashburn. I posted about it on my personal Facebook page. I did not post about it on my city council page, but my personal Facebook page is linked to my official city council page. So even though it wasn't posted there, I still made an ethics violation, because I opposed a candidate for an office, even though it was not a city office. So I think there's a, again, but there's no consequence to that, other than I just had to tell you all I violated the Ethics Ordinance by opposing the District Attorney, who you all know tried to send me to prison for 35 years. So, you know, I get a little worked up about it. So I think the, the ordinance, as it was written, was well-intentioned by previous council members. But again, no other city seemed to do this. I haven't seen any problems in other cities of, around here anyway, of city council members endorsing other candidates or anything. Again, if we get rid of this ordinance tonight, I personally will commit that I'm not going to ever endorse or oppose anybody running for Norman City Council or Mayor. That's just my own personal opinion, I don't think it's a good idea. But again, if people want to know what I think about district attorney or state offices, I think I should be able to tell them without having to worry about violating the Ethics Ordinance. And I think there is a question too about, you know, we brought this up before, is this current ordinance a sword or a shield? And I think some of us could argue that it's more of a sword to be used against other members than it is a shield. Thank you.
Well, first, I want to say, Councilmember Wilson, I am so glad you kept the fire in your belly after losing that four-four vote and draw out of the hat. And I, I feel similarly to everyone. I think it is too much of a gray area when someone is serving in their capacity as a city council member, and when they are an individual citizen. I wouldn't want to ever have to put this up against someone's First Amendment rights. And though I agree, and, and though I agree with Councilmember Holman, that it can sometimes come back to bite you if you, if you endorse someone for particularly a city office, and, you know, maybe their opponent is the one who gets in. I think there's also something to be said for sharing some insight about what a job that you hold entails. There are a lot of people who don't know a lot about city council and city government, and what goes into the job. And being able to share some of that without the fear of an Ethics Ordinance being used as a sword against you, and choosing your words too carefully, I think, is a benefit to the city, to be able to share your experiences and, you know, bounce back and forth whether someone, you know, has the time commitment, or, you know, has the, has the wherewithal to serve in that capacity. And especially when it comes to social media and the ability to screenshot someone's private comments and wield it as a sword against someone, or their public comments, and wield it as a sword against someone. I think that we need to eliminate that tactic and that tool being used against council members, even if there is no teeth to it. As council members have said, it still looks bad, you know, to be, to be convicted of an ethics violation. It sounds like it has teeth to it, even if it doesn't. So I will be supporting removing this endorsement. No other major city in Oklahoma has this, and I think for good reason. I think it's up to council members to use their judgment about which office they endorse, and when they do so, and to whom they do so, and how, and how publicly they do so. So I will gladly be supporting removing this from our Ethics Ordinance, and we'll see how everyone takes it from here.
Councilmember Scott.
I agree with everybody and everything that was said so far. I did post a thing in the Ward Eight Facebook page today, and I know that Facebook, and this is not directed at you, I'm so sorry. On the Ward Eight Facebook page, it's a very small sample, but people disagree with us using our office as a platform to endorse candidates. And I understand, you know, I'd love to use my platform to endorse candidates who I support and I believe in. However, I don't think necessarily I was elected to do that, just based on the feedback that I've received today. I think that this office is used to represent my ward, and I don't necessarily think that all of my constituents support who I support or believe who I believe on every single issue. So I'm just out of respect for them, who have, who have spoken against it today. And again, while I agree with everything that's been said, out of respect for them and what they've said, I'm going to go ahead and not support this. But the rest of you can get that sword out from under my belly, so I'm done.
Comments from the public?
Casey Holcomb, Ward Four. I appreciate that this, this prohibition against council members endorsing other people for office. I appreciate the intent behind that, and that it prevents the development of cliques and possibly factionalism and consolidation of power. So I do appreciate that. I don't understand, I mean, another, the, the way things have worked when council members have to step down or vacate a seat, the way things have worked in recent years is that the council member gets to pretty much handpick their successor. And so I don't understand how, I mean, what, what's, what distinguishes that type of unethical behavior, that type of unethical behavior from, you know, this current ordinance? And so I would, I would appreciate a little bit of legal clarification on that, because I, you know, you've seen this with Ward Three, seen this with Ward Five, and I don't know what's next. And it, as it, as it, as it happens, let me finish my statement, some of these have coincided with votes, certain votes coming up, that involved the interests of the people who were appointed to sit in their place. So influence peddling is a state crime, and that's already addressed in, in the ordinance. The, 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 the state statutes that qualify that kind of influence peddling as a criminal offense is incorporated in, in the, in the existing Ethics Ordinance. So there is that, so.
Would you like to do some clarification on that? I'm not sure what council members are able to.
Sure, Mayor, let's see, I'm trying to think back from memory here. I think Ward Four, I think Carol Dillingham was appointed by the council to fulfill a term, I think maybe when Mayor Rosenthal was elected to mayor. I think, let's see, Councilmember Castleberry was appointed to fill a Ward Three vacancy when Councilmember Azell moved outside of his ward and he resigned. They went through a process where there were several people that applied, and council talked about the applicants collectively, and they were not able to come to a consensus on who they wanted to appoint, and so they ended up drawing a name out of the hat. And Councilmember Castleberry was the winner of the drawing. Similarly, when Mayor Miller was elected as mayor, then that created a vacancy in Ward Five. And Councilmember Miller, I mean, excuse me, Mayor Miller initiated a similar process where applications were submitted, and there was a review committee that reviewed those and made a recommendation, but there was, I, I think there may, maybe was a split in the recommendation, and so there wasn't a real consensus there either. And so those names were submitted to council, they went through a voting process, and there was a tie. And since it was tied, four to four, then similar to the method in which Councilmember Castleberry originally was awarded the Ward Three seat, Councilmember Chapel, then his name was drawn out of the hat, and then he was the Ward Five representative.
So if I could just ask one follow-up question about that. So what is the process for, the ethics complaints are to be directed toward the city attorney's office? And so what does that entail subsequent to actually filing their quest? Is there, is there an investigation that hap, occurs after that, or how does that proceed?
Yeah, the, the Ethics Ordinance itself, I think in subsection H, talks about the city attorney reviewing the ethics complaints. I think there have been two actually filed on this particular provision. And our office reviewed those, made a, a initial finding. Those findings then were shared with two council members against whom those ethics complaints had been filed. I have been able to meet with one of them. I think Councilmember Holman spoke about it tonight. I haven't had a chance yet to meet with the other one, although he did file a rebuttal, and so we have that information, and we're going to look at it. But we just kind of go through that process. But as Ms. Bell mentioned, there are really no teeth involved, there's no sanction involved other than reporting what our recommendation might be as far as what we, whether we believe the factual backdrop actually violates the language of the Ethics Ordinance. And so that's how we approach it.
Okay, so none of this, and you, so this, basically, do you have subpoena power? If, if, if somebody's been accused of an ethics complaint, do you have the power to subpoena them and do discovery or something like that, like a court proceeding, or something similar to that? You don't have that authority?
We have not approached it that way at all. Usually, on, on these types of things, people are fairly forthcoming about the information, and that certainly has been the case with both of these council members.
But if you were going to include teeth in, in something like this, which you've insisted you might, might be the case, that would be something that, I mean, you, you don't even have the authorities to subpoena people.
Yeah, the ordinance was adopted by council, and so we just try to work within the language that the council adopted in the ordinance. We have discussed this ordinance several times. But yeah, we just work within the language that's in the ordinance.
So if somebody does have an ethics complaint, it basically, if, if you do want teeth, you have to take it to, what, a district court or something? Is that, is that the process then? Does that become the process?
Again, there's no penalty or sanction for the ethics violation, other than reporting that the language of the ordinance may have been violated.
My name's Kevin Nelson, I live in Ward One, I'm owner there. I just wanted to say I support your First Amendment rights, and certainly, outside of this council, I think you have the right to, to say what you will about who you will. And, and I appreciate not using official Facebook accounts or, or, or city resources in any way in making any endorsements, but I certainly support your First Amendment rights. And if I ever ended up on a board like this, or a council, or, or in any elected office, I certainly would like to retain mine.
Everyone, Evan A. Dunn, 1400 Garfield. I'm in agreement, I think this is something that enhances transparency. It frees you all up to be more authentic. Sometimes, though, when my knee-jerk response is to support something, I try to pause and think, what would it be like for me if I were in one of your positions? And so let's say I've been elected Senator of Oklahoma, and a good friend acquaintance of mine asks me for their support. And they're an acquaintance, they're not a good friend. I imagine they'll, they'll do all right, but if there's a stipulation that precludes me from voicing an opinion, then it gives me a convenient way of maintaining a superficial relationship with that person who's running for that other's office. And although that might be convenient for me as an elected official, it means that that friendship acquaintanceship hasn't established much depth. And this, I think, is simple, but it helps that.
Final council comments? I support this change in the Ethics Ordinance. I do think it's important, as elected officials, that we have some political sensitivity. I think our new councilmember, Scott, mentioned that a number of her, her constituents said they didn't feel comfortable with her advocating for certain people. I think that was one of the reasons this was put into an ordinance in the first place. But in our discussions, it came out, it's more of a political decision than it really is an ethical decision, and we have some real problems with our Ethics Ordinance, because it doesn't really have any consequences. And, and we've been wrestling with that, but we really haven't, we really haven't solved all those issues. But I think in light of that, it's a good idea just to go ahead and each one of us make our own decisions about who we support and how we feel like. We can do that, because I do think we have to be sensitive to our constituents. They don't, they don't all agree with my particular political beliefs, so, but I'm in agreement with this, and the motion's on the floor, and... But I'm in agreement with this, and the motion's on the floor, and council members, you may cast your votes. No? Oh, I've got to go through the second reading thing. Motion on the floors to adopt the ordinance on second reading. By a show of hands, all those in favor? Those opposed? That, that was one. Yeah, she didn't vote for it. Yeah. Eight and one. Yeah, the results were eight and one. I'll entertain a motion to adopt, eight for and one against. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on final reading.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Council members, you may cast your votes. All votes have been cast, and the motion to adopt the ordinance on final reading passes by a vote of ink to one, voting against Councilmember Scott. This opportunity for citizens to address city council remarks should be addressed the city council as a whole, and limited to five minutes or less. Mr. Hyple, it's been a long time.
Council members, my name's Harold Hyple. My office address is 218 East Yufalla. Long story, very short. I've never been on social media. I will never be on social media. But late this afternoon, I was told that there may be a war of words between two groups on social media. And reportedly, two members of my immediate family are in one of those groups. Now, I'm not here to advocate for either group, I don't know the details, I don't want to know the details. All I want to do is ask that two sisters, who are longtime residents of Norman, that's Sandra Kerr, whose husband is Sam Kerr, Sherry Clark, whose husband is Steve Clark, they are the sisters who own the very small piece of property that'll be before you, final reading, in two weeks. You've approved them on the consent docket as items seven and eight. What I am asking you to do is that they be free from any influence by the name of Hyple interjected anyplace. So for that reason, at five this afternoon, I called my clients, and I withdrew effective immediately. Because, as I say, they have softened since the Planning Commission, where the initial application was C2, they've softened it in response to protests that were filed at the Planning Commission. They deserve a complete and fair hearing in, in order to be sure, hopefully, that the name Hyple will in no way affect your decision in two weeks. That's why I'm up here asking for your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you.
Rusty Rasmussen, Ward Two resident, Ward Four business owner. As I stand before you, I want to welcome Councilmember Carter, Councilmember Scott, and the challengers that sit before Councilmember Hickman. As you may know, July 15th is National Ice Cream Day, and my business, Rusty's Custard Factory, is celebrating that event with a citywide celebration. We will have live music from two o'clock to eight o'clock. We're going to block off Crawford. Councilmember Clark would be happy to know that we have appropriate sound and street permits from the city, so we follow all protocol. But what I have before me is a, a winning trophy that has been in Mr. Hickman's office. I had to dust it off today because it had a lot of construction debris from Main Street. Two years, he has been our running champion. I invite each of you to come and dethrone the king. If you are unable to attend and wish to get a surrogate, I hear he has a family member that beat his time last year. Uh huh, yeah, his, his daughter's pretty good. Anyway, I invite you all. Mayor Miller, you're our, you're our guest judge. You're welcome to hand this award to the appropriate council member who, who has a good time. Do you have any questions? His time is roughly around a minute, five seconds. However, our store record time is 39 seconds. You're more than welcome to step up to the plate and eat a whole banana split in 39 seconds. Your, oh, three o'clock, three o'clock on Sunday. We, the big band will take a break in order for the crowd to gather and witness this, this attempt.
Witness me, be excited.
And just so you all know, in the last year since I've been before the council, we have moved. We are now a, a very happy downtown business. We're on the corner of Main and Crawford. I'm excited about my new location and excited to be in a year seventeen of being a Norman business owner. So thank you for your time, and I will take this with me. You can get it on Sunday.
July 15th, three o'clock, ice cream contest. Got it.
Is it possible to, I said, I mentioned earlier, the Ethics Ordinance says you have to submit something in writing, but is it possible to just read something into the record right In lieu of a formal written complaint?
I suppose it's, are you filing a complaint? Is that what you're asking?
I'm just asking about the process, if that was possible.
I, I guess we haven't had this before.
I think the preference would be that you do something in writing and submit it, either to the city clerk or to the city attorney's office.
Okay, thank you.
I'm very, very vain, overly self-confident, I think, in many ways at certain times. I think you all did a, a very good thing that we needed to have done in just eliminating the allocation of resources to the U N P proposal. It is going to develop, so be it. The OU Foundation controls the assets. All we can do, all that I'm going to try to do is to shape their ideas and the approach and the relationships that they have with those different interests, whether they be financial or construction-based. That's all that I can do. I just have to vote on the side of something other than more spectacle. I think it is morally corrosive, it is ethically corrosive, and it's going to be something in the future that's not going to make people say, oh, I want to go live in Norman, Oklahoma. I hear they have this awesome engineering program and this other awesome program. Oh, yeah, their sports are just incredible. That's really it. It, it's, it's not enough. The priorities for me are us figuring out how we can minimize our fuel expenditures, wasteful spending, services. I was thinking about this. If 20% of the people vote, I think we need to impose or pull back services. I was thinking about this, Judd. The fireworks show last week, it was like, what, 15, 10 minutes long? Cut that in half. Your, your fireworks expenditures go in half. I didn't create this, this is permaculture, okay? Our parks, we expend huge amounts of fuel for this prettiness factor, and they are pretty. Flat green grass is neurologically pleasing. However, if we can't turn every one of our schools and as many of our parks into functional food forests that do not demand our fossil fuel attention, that do not demand the input of resources but can still contribute to the community, it's just a foregone conclusion. If, if you all had read this, if you all had had the opportunity and the time and the energy to devote to studying these types of solutions, you would be in agreement with me. It's just something that, it's taken us a couple thousand years to do all of the research about horticulture, about companion planting, and we have it now, but we're just not using it. I'm into simplicity, it's a phrase I've been using. Our world is highly complex, technology is highly complex. How do we address these core fundamental issues that manifest in our adulthood? Well, you have to integrate the postural experience of breathing and contemplating and thinking and approaching your life as your art. I didn't plan to be an artist. I was 29 years old, I was living in China, I was going to go into urban design and city planning. Cancer changed my life, coming back home changed my life, living in the Bahamas changed my life. I have this unique perspective. I have seen the industrial hell of China, where you have solidarity and teamwork and mutual sacrifice. I have seen the tourist hedonistic dependency hell of paradise in the Bahamas, and then I have grown up here in the hell of suburbia, which is slowly corroding. And I don't think people understand the simplicity of ways that we can change our educational system, change our city government, and create networks through which we can solve the biggest problems that can be scaled up to not just Norman but to the world, to get financing from, have the Chinese Import-Export Bank. The thing about all the billionaires, if we come through with a model and a vision that can be put together in a presentation that's clear and concise and convincing, and I've been working on this, I gave myself last Tuesday as a deadline, and I didn't make it. I was, that was going to be my deadline, and then the next week I was going to rehearse for tonight. I, I just didn't make it. So this is still, this is kind of extemporaneous, thinking out loud stuff. But, thank you, get that clock going. I do have a, a trademark that is pending on these, I call them U-Thrones. And, Madam Mayor, if you'll grant me another 30 seconds, I'll-
And the rumor mill, the gossip mill is big, and I feel insecure, I don't feel a part of the community. Well, if every student in our school system were provided a way in which they could physiologically be reminded and remind themselves that no matter what they're saying, I have worth as a human being, I don't care what the dysfunction is at my home, I have a job to do to contribute to this community, and by God, I'm going to do it. If we turn our school systems into functional food forests, you think our kids who are obese wouldn't benefit by that activity, getting out there and weeding the garden, pruning the fruit trees, and doing it together? Oh, oh, it's-
Thank you, Evan. Thank you.
The artwork over to the library. Let's, let's make a deal with crucible to get four pines, statuettes of people grabbing the tornado, it's taking, grabbing the, the papers, tornado's taking away. The chaos of the world is somehow being left.
Thank you, Evan.
Oh, I am getting a copy of Robert Ford.
Thank you. Good.
Scott Martin, Ward Five, Norman Chamber of Commerce. Two messages this evening. First, my 11-year-old son asked me to relay a message of thanks. I've been keeping him abreast of Norman forward activities, particularly the potential sell or purchasing agreement that's happening of Griffin Park. He plays a lot of baseball there and is anxious to get to Reeves Park and play baseball there. So I told him that two weeks ago, you took a major step in making that happen, and he wanted to extend my thanks, or his thanks to you. So thank you, on behalf of him. Secondly, as far as Chamber of Commerce goes, and I hate to steal anyone's thunder, I'm sure you all are going to probably talk about this in your comments, but before you meet next time, there's going to be a fairly historic sidewalk sale that's going to take place, July the 19th through the 21st, all throughout our community. This is decades in the making, many of us can't remember the last time we've had a community-wide sidewalk sale, but this is a fantastic opportunity for our fellow citizens to get out and support our local businesses. They're going to be, these sales are going to be taking place all across town, Brookhaven Village, Campus Corner, Downtown, East Side Business Association, Lindsay Street Merchants, Sooner Mall, the main district, and University Town Center, and probably others, because I've received emails from other districts that, that have said, hey, how can we get in on this? We'd like to be listed too. So I would encourage each of you, along with our fellow citizens who may not be aware of this, to get out and shop on July the 19th and 21st, all throughout town. As always, I'd encourage you to shop Norman. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll start with Councilmember Bierman. I think I promised Councilmember Scott I wouldn't start with her.
I don't have a whole lot to say tonight, except bring it on, council members. Sunday's banana split eating contest, taking that trophy home. So I hope all of you show up or send a surrogate, so I can beat all seven of you, because the mayor's, the mayor's guest judging, so. I, I throw down the gauntlet in front of you all.
Apparently, I turned it around, and Ms. Scott wanted to start first. So I'm very sorry, if you want to speak again, you can, we'll start down here and we'll go all the way down again.
I appreciate it, thank you very much. I like to be number one, go first. No, I'm just kidding, kind of. I also am looking forward to hopefully being at the banana Sunday eating contest and kicking some Bill Hickman butt, and everybody else here too. So, I don't know, I don't practice eating a lot of ice cream usually, but I'm ready. And the only other thing I really have is thanks again, you know, it's my, mine and Joe's first official council meeting, and it's been surprising and fun. Also, the ward meeting I'd like to have this month, on the 29th, the destination is still to be determined. However, I, I'm, I'm looking at east and west side of Ward Eight. So any Ward Eight watchers out there, if you have suggestions, I'm open to listening.
Roosevelt.
Roosevelt School, yeah.
A lot of times they have them there.
I hear that elementaries are good too, so, thank you.
Councilmember Holman.
Yes, I would love to just, yeah, again, welcome Joe Carter and Alex Scott to our city council here. There was a little bit of a taste tonight about what we're going to be dealing with going forward, but I think we've got a good group, and I think we can do it. I do want to talk about one issue real quick, a state issue, State Question 788. After the rules that were passed today by the Health Department, I just wanted to maybe encourage this council to consider a resolution in the next, the coming weeks or so, encouraging the state legislature to honor the will of the voters, but also maybe think about if there's any issues. Basically, what I mean is, State Question 788 passed by 71.5% in Norman, citywide. Every single voting precinct in Norman, every single city council ward voted for it. Every city, single, every city, every single city council ward approved it by at least 60% or more. Ward Seven had almost 3,000 yes votes, and many of you that know about Ward Seven know that my ward has the lowest voter turnout consistently of any ward, and to see 3,000 of my residents come out and vote in favor of this is really eye-opening. Not surprising that it passed in my ward, but 82% is considerably high. In Ward Four, it passed by almost 90%. In my own precinct, it passed by 93%. Only 10 people voted no in my precinct. So, there are a lot of questions, though, about the state law, that we don't know what the city may be asked to regulate in the future. We do know that, as it's written, the city would not receive any of the tax revenue from it, but we could be tasked with enforcing, code enforcement on them. We will definitely have to provide services like police and fire to these businesses. So there are some ramifications to the city that I would like us to consider and possibly consider a resolution, encourage- and possibly consider a resolution encouraging the legislature to act on that at some point. So, again, I think that is an issue that's going to impact Norman maybe more than some other cities. So something we need to think about maybe at our retreat in later this month or in August. So, other than that, I thank all of you for coming and sitting through this with us and hopefully we'll see you next time.
Member Clark.
Well, first I'd like to remind everyone that we have Norman Conquest coming up this weekend in East Norman. It's a great community bike ride. They've got everything from a very family-friendly town tour to 64 miles, which I don't think I'll ever sign up for that. But you can still sign up today and it comes with a free dinner at O'Connell's on Friday, so you can carb load. And then, you know, you get out at 7:00 AM before it gets too hot, but it really is a lot of fun, especially the town tour. It starts at the J.D. McCarty Center at Ward 6 and the proceeds benefit the J.D. McCarty Center. So if you haven't tried Norman Conquest, I encourage you to look into it. It is a lot of fun. On a more serious note, I am very frustrated by the vote that happened tonight on the study because we're talking out of both sides of our mouth. One minute we ask for information, so we postpone a vote. And then we have the chance to get more information and we decline it. So I'm frustrated and confused about that. Frustrated that I will not have the information that I needed to make the best and most responsible vote on a very important community issue. Frustrated that we had a responsibility to get that information and that the people that asked for more information today declined it. And now that $25,000 will come out of the general fund, which is my understanding, city staff has been asked to look at 11.4%, they're gonna already cut out of their budgets. And we're on a hiring freeze when Public Works has eight positions that they need filled and can't fill at this point. So, I hope we can do better. I can appreciate where Councilmember Scott and Councilmember Carter came from, because they weren't here asking for more information. But everyone else that did, I hope we can be a little more honest with each other if we're gonna have productive conversations moving forward.
Councilmember Wilson.
I have been very honest. I've asked and pushed back on meetings that were private. And I would, I actually take a huge exception to the honesty dig because I'm trying very hard to toe a line for our citizens. And just so everyone knows, July 17th study session will be on how to end a TIF legally, politically, financially. So come talk, come listen. There are options for making our general fund whole. And I have tried to listen and I have tried to understand this issue. And I don't really want to forecast my vote, but I am definitely more in favor of looking at ending that curse word, TIF. So, having said that, I'm being honest with you. I do not support this. I did not support spending more money on it. I wanted to be open, I wanted to listen to the information, but it went behind closed doors again. And, and I feel like I was kind of tricked into attending the meeting. I didn't even know what I was meeting about. So I'm irritated at that. I'm sorry everybody's upset that we didn't get to spend the $30,000 and get more information. But maybe our city staff, maybe our city attorney should, you know, be mindful of that. I'm asking for it, I'm telling you how I want to be treated, I'm telling you what I expect is a boundary. And so respect that. I am seeing councilmembers get screenshots of private messages and being held to an ethical standard and being chased around about where they live. And yet we have these meetings that are sketchy. And it makes me crazy because I want to have the conversations in here, in front of you guys, in front of you on the TV, in front of my ward as often as possible. When I have a conversation where I need to get, gain information or gain understanding, I do it with a couple of councilmembers that I respect. And I get their perspective on it. I don't go around asking all the councilmembers how they're gonna vote on something, if they're gonna support it, if they're gonna kill it and move on. This is crazy. So, yeah, I respect the process, I respected it on every step of the way. I've made some missteps with rules of three, which I don't feel like I support necessarily because I kind of understand where the, that goes wrong. I have made some missteps on calling questions. I also am not a fan of that because I think it quiets people. But I'm learning and I'm also teaching how I want to be treated as a councilmember. So, get your bike out and ride it in the conquest. I'm done.
Councilmember Hickman.
Well, some up here want to lecture us about, you know, civil discourse and being polite, if you will, to one another, but then they want to turn around and lecture us. So I think that we need to make sure that we are being even-handed and fair in how we're treating one another. I just want to be clear. I voted against the HVS studying because of the process. I've always sat up here and talked to you about process. And it's that plain and simple to me. I voted for the endorsement because there are some that sit up here that want to use it as a sword to attack other people for their political gain. I want to welcome Councilmember Scott, Councilmember Carter. Pleased to have you up here with us. Looking forward to serving with this council and the good work that we can hopefully do for our community and for our people. I agree with Councilmember Holman. As the current chair of the CPTC, would be my request that we add further discussion regarding State Question 788 and its implementation on upcoming council agenda. As some of you may know, I requested that be a council agenda item for the CPTC previously. Believe we were one of the only cities, if not the only city, that had a discussion about its implementation prior to the actual vote, and it was very informative and helpful. And I agree, now that it's passed, we need to have a follow-up discussion and begin the process of what role the city can play and how that's going to be implemented in our community. And I want to make a few community announcements. This is Friday the 13th, so come out to downtown Norman, enjoy Friday night Art Walk. It's a great, wonderful time. I want to highlight one in particular event at the Depot. Tim Kenny, Ward 4 owns, painter, world-renowned painter, is having his showing at the Depot, the historic Depot. So go check out all the wonderful things, the Friday night Art Walk. And on the Sunday, the 15th, it's the Summer Breeze Concert. The Mulligan's Brothers will be performing in the Summer Breeze Concert Series at Lyons Park. That's always a great, wonderful time. Hopefully it won't be too hot and humid for you to go out there and enjoy that. And then the following Saturday, the 21st, at the Tully Park right here on Main Street, they have an outdoor movie series and they're showing A League of Their Own. So lots of wonderful, fun things to do here in Ward 4. So get out over the next couple of weeks and enjoy Norman and please do shop Norman. Thank you.
Councilmember Castleberry.
I guess more importantly is no single council member up here showed up to challenge me at the golf tournament. The citywide golf tournament. So we can eat banana splits all we want to, but, you know. Anyway, Judd, I want to say, you guys did a great job, Westwood Invitational, it's statewide. There's actually people from out of state that come in here, really good competition. It's a three-day event, one of the only 54-hole golf tournaments in the state. So it was a great time, very competitive. I think the tournament record was tied this year. Last year Brad Dawkins played in the Masters, All-American at OU. And so there's very competitive golf. I was fortunate to be in the fourth flight, which is the non-competitive, the worst golfers. And so I ended up in a playoff being the best worst golfer in the league. And so, so I think we should do that more often, get all the councilmembers to do a golf deal instead of eating and get out to do exercise and, well, so. Unfortunately, I am a little disappointed, Judd. I was told that it's actually a two-stroke penalty if you put a ball into the lazy river on that hole. So I found out the hard way on that. But no, in all seriousness, Rusty, I'm not gonna be able to make your deal Sunday, I've got some family commitments. But I am searching to find out who the best person in Ward 3 is there so we can bring that home. And I want to say a little bit about tonight's meeting. I think we had, I, I actually think this was a very good meeting. We, each councilmember, I think, showed their passion. I think they showed that we can disagree with each other civilly and take our votes and be done with it. And so I think we all had our reasons why we voted yes and why we voted no. I don't necessarily agree with those, but I respect everybody's reasons why they did it. And I think that's, that's part of the process. I don't have any problem with the process as far as us having meetings. If I did, I would have walked out of the meeting. If I thought we were viol-, if I thought it was a walking quorum or I thought we were doing, I would have walked out of the meeting. I never, thought never crossed my mind because I was never asked how I was gonna vote. I thought it was kind of a strategic plan. We've had this with Stormwater, we've had it with, with other items where we've talked about things. I just thought it was kind of a group four to get together. I, I think those are, meetings are productive, especially when you have newer councilmembers and just getting together. It, it's hard for us since, at least for me, I'm always hesitant about talking to other councilmembers because I'm, you know, cognizant of this walking quorum, these secret backdoor meetings that we have, stuff like this. But yet, I think one of the good things about our council is we have a lot of different perspectives. We have different ages, we have different, you know, male, female, ages, occupations. I think it's good for us to actually meet and talk with each other and get different perspectives. I think that's how we get there. We can't just sit here and argue and debate with each other from the diocese. And I think it's good when we get in private and we consider to talk about things and, no, I never thought about that. Well, I wish you had said that at the diocese. Well, I only had two minutes and then went to the next person, the mayor didn't call on me. And so I, you know, it's not really a conversational type of atmosphere whereas opposed, you can sit there and talk to somebody and the conversation kind of runs in different deals. And I think that helps us understand where people are coming from, help us, I didn't think about that perspective. You know, we, we're talking about Airbnb and I think Councilman Scott made a good deal about, hey, 18-year-olds should be able to do this. As a 55-year-old, I didn't really think about 18-year-olds. So, yes. So, so I think that's good. And we would have never had that conversation, had it been there. So I think it's good that we were able to do this stuff. I appreciate everybody, their passion, I appreciate everybody being civil. And so, I think it was a, I think it was actually a very good meeting. I'll leave it at that.
Councilmember Carter.
I'm good.
Okay. We still have executive session.
Yeah, we gotta go back in there for a few minutes.
Councilmember Bierman.
Well, my gauntlet feels a little more serious now, but I'm still gonna throw it down. I hope everyone shows up at Rusty's on Sunday for National Ice Cream Day and the banana split eating contest is a lot harder than you think to try and down a banana split. So come hungry, practice beforehand. It's custard, not ice cream, Councilmember Scott. But it is still just as delicious. I will also point out, I feel like I've been a little delinquent in my, in my responsibilities here in promoting Norman Animal Welfare. They do a fantastic job caring for the animals in our city. One of the few departments that's tasked with, with taking care of live creatures. The staff works incredibly hard, the volunteers work incredibly hard. And they are waiving adoption fees through July 14th because they have a lot of animals that need homes this summer. So if you need a cat or a dog in your life, as I know everyone does, please go and visit the staff and volunteers down at Norman Animal Welfare and adopt one of their amazing animals. They all come vetted and spayed or neutered and microchipped and they make wonderful companions. I have two rescue dogs and three rescue cats. And other than my daughter and my husband, they are the lights of my life. I love each and every one of them. And I, on a slightly more serious note, I just want to put the emphasis on whatever we do in encouraging and generating public trust. That is something that I think needs to be on the forefront of our minds whenever we are acting as, as this body, whether it's deliberating, discussing, or actually making decisions. We need to do so with the public trust in mind. And so I hope that we all listen to each other and, you know, listen to everyone's concerns. I hope we don't talk past each other. And I hope that we remember that we should be outward-facing with everything we do and that we should do so with as much transparency and as much openness as possible. Because like it or not, we do have a trust deficit in this city. And it's something that we can only, we can only address by working at it. And so I want us to always consider that in everything that we do and everything that we say. And I'll leave it at that because we do have to go back into executive session. So, have a good night.
Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Like to begin tonight with a quick update on our sales tax report. If Mr. Francisco was here, he would say happy new year. And of course, what he means by that is we're beginning our new fiscal year. But good news to report here, as you can see during the month of July, our sales tax was up $133,000 or about 2.9%. So as you can see on the chart, we've had three consecutive positive months when you compare these receipts over last year's receipts and then four out of five months. And so good news to report there, just wanted to pass that along. Next, I wanted to move along to just a quick update on Norman Ford. And I thought this was really interesting in terms of, in terms of some of the attendance that we're seeing at the new Westwood Family Aquatic Park. And that, and that was really one of the reasons why we went forward with that project was to expose young people and families to aquatics, but also to increase our attendance at those facilities. And as you can see here, our total attendance as of July the 9th is 64,800, almost 65,000 new participants there at the, at the facility. That's a 90% increase over 2016's total attendance of 34,000. So you can see, and of course you would expect there to be just a great attendance with the new facility, but this is really much more than we had, had ever thought was going to happen. We've seen just a big increase in our water walkers, that's a new program as long, as well as toddler time. But we've almost seen a double increase in terms of our swim lessons as well. And so that's, I think it's just a real, real important component of what we'll be able to do at the new facility. Next, a quick update on our 12th Avenue Recreation Center. We have some new playground equipment going in now, it's underway, it should be completed in August. And here again, this is another link, this, this project is being funded through our room tax. And of course, we obviously, you're just seeing some work in progress here. We still have to complete the synthetic playground, but that, that will soon be finished as well. Next, talking a little bit about our emergency communication system. You know, one of those projects that came out of our last public safety sales tax increase, not necessarily a project that most people see, but it's very important to all of our public safety officials and all of our first responders. And so just a quick update here, and you can see here is an example of the new communications tower that's just been erected over near the Animal Welfare Center. So all six of our tower sites have been secured. We, the construction is almost in complete on all of those. The tower equipment will be coming along in the upcoming months. So we should be having switched over to the new system, should take place later this year. So things are moving very positively there. Another public safety sales tax project or apparatus is a new piece of equipment that's being, currently being manufactured in Wisconsin right now. These are pictures from up there. But this is gonna be a new squad truck that's gonna be housed at Station 7. And this is replacing a piece of equipment that's really at the end of its service life. This piece of equipment will be delivered and be in service later this year. And then finally, just a quick update here, almost finally, in terms of the Stormwater Citizen Committee, open houses. We've had a number of open houses. Our next one that is scheduled for July the 25th at the Norman Public Library East. And that will be from 3:30 to 5:30 PM on that day. And then finally, we just often get questions about, you know, where can I go get information about, you know, things that people read about and are really interested in? If you go to our website, you can get a lot of information about Norman Ford as well as the microsite that's been developed for the Stormwater Utility. And then finally, of course, City of Norman, we have our own YouTube channel. We have a number of educational videos that are on that site with respect to city departments. But we've just recently added to that site- But we've just recently added to that site the broadcast of our city council meetings. And we're finding a lot of people really enjoy viewing city council meetings on the YouTube site. The quality is great and so just another opportunity to stay informed and stay connected with what's going on in local government. So thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Lots of, lots of good news out there. We've gotten to have a couple of celebrations on milestones for our Eastside Library and, and our downtown library and, and it's really nice for us to have opportunities to remind people that these projects are, are going on in Westwood is just amazing. I'm going to make a comment about our, our vote tonight about the HVS study. This past year, I have learned so much in the last year, year and a half about the economics of our city and about the needs of our city. We've been doing, and I'd been on the council for several years before, but I, I have learned so much in this past year to 18 months. We've been in the middle of, we're getting towards the end of a strategic economic plan for the City of Norman. It's the first one we've done in over 20 years. And it's given us lots of information about the strengths we have as a community and the weaknesses we have as the community and some trends that aren't, that aren't good about our community in terms of losing more of our educated population, not being able to get as many of our young families to stay here, dropping school enrollment. And then this whole UNP thing, first we had Center City, which was, we did a TIF on. We did a TIF because we felt like that would help develop that area. It was the only thing that was going to work so that we could have that missing middle housing. So that was an economic piece to pull our campus corner and our downtown together. Then we have the UNP TIF that we've been looking at for over a year. It is another economic opportunity. Is it a good one or is it not? And I'm just really, really disappointed. We had several more meetings where we were going to get more information. We were going, we were going to look at the strategic economic plan. We were going to look at the Kimley Horn Parking Project. These are things that are there to help us make a decision. And all I'm saying, whatever the decision was going to be, I really wished that we had had that last HVS study because I think it was going to answer some important economic questions, not only for the north part of the TIF, but the south part of the TIF and other things that we need to do in our city. That being said, I want to thank our Stormwater Citizen Committee members. We've had three Stormwater Open Houses. We had one at Roosevelt, we, or one at Truman. We had one at Washington Elementary. We had one last night. Our Chair, Amanda Naren, has been at every single one of them, along with some of our staff and Carrie Evanson, who has really helped keep, keep all of this moving along. We've had really positive meetings. People have asked a lot of good questions and we're getting the kind of feedback that I think is going to help us come up with a really good, good initiative to take to the voters. So I just want to thank those people and Sean that comes to everything. But we're, we're really getting the information from the public when we need to be getting it before we've made our final decision. And with that being said, I'll entertain a motion.
Second.
Motion to go back in the executive session?
No. We have to go back into.
We need to adjourn this meeting and then go in there and they can.
Okay, we need to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.